So, everybody, if I can have your attention, please, I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting this evening. I'd like to recognize and thank our broadcasting partners and our media reporting partners who report on our meeting and broadcast it. Counselor Butland asked me for a moment to recognize two of his fellow counselors, and once that's done, we'll get the meeting going.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I want to acknowledge a couple of our colleagues, Counselor Turco and Counselor Kompodich. The Alzheimer's Walk last Sunday, I guess it was, or a week ago Sunday, between the two of them, they raised about $4,000. And Lou's been a longtime supporter of this particular walk, and Joe joined in this year. So, thanks, you two fellows, and let's do it again next year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so to the community at large, I evidently forgot to wear my Bon Sous sweater tonight, but let's not lose sight of the fact that it is Bon Sous and Bon Sous is still ongoing, and we should get out and support it. Counselor Turco says I'm all right. Mr. Clerk, if you could start the meeting, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under Agenda Item 1, Adoption of Minutes, a motion by Councillors Myers and Bruny, resolved that the minutes of the regular city council meeting of 2018-01-22 be approved. I believe Counselor Kompodich has something to note on those.
Counselor Kompodich?
Yes, just noted on the January 22nd Minutes under Bylaw 11.1.11, I was a seconder on the resolution, and I was absent from that council meeting.
We've noted that.
Okay, all in favor? Carried.
Declarations of pecuniary interest?
Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pecuniary interest, Item 6.12, municipal bylaw officers and relative bylaws. 8.1, crossing guards, St. George's Avenue, St. Basil's, spouse is on the school board as a trustee with the Huron Superior School Board.
Counselor Kompodich?
Just one item, Item 6.3, update on retention of restructuring lawyer fee, employee of Essar and USW Union Coordinator.
Counselor Grandinetti?
Item 6.3, I'm employed by Essar.
Anybody else? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk?
Under Agenda Item 4, proof agenda is presented, a motion by Councillors Myers and Fan, resolved that the agenda and addendum for 2018-02 city council meeting as presented be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
Under Agenda Item 5, 5.1, Black History Month, Jane Amolo, President, African Caribbean Association of Northern Ontario is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Ms. Amolo. Or, you're all welcome to come to the microphone. Do you have a presentation, mate, before I read the declaration?
Yes, I do.
The microphone's yours. Go ahead, please.
African Caribbean Association of Northern Ontario is pleased to be here today. I have a few of my members here. As an association, who are established in 2011 as a not-for-profit, non-political, and non-denominational association that seeks to promote and grow awareness of our cultural heritage while promoting unity within the community. Black History Month is an opportunity for us to celebrate the achievements and contributions of Black Canadians, as well as share our history and culture. This year, Akano, in partnership with Great Lakes Honda and Bon Sous, would like to extend our warmest invitation to all of you to join us in this year's annual History Month dinner celebration. The celebration dinner will be held on Saturday, February 24th, from 5:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. at the Grand Gardens North, located on 1324 Northern Road. This event will feature multicultural dinner party, live music, doll prizes, and a kashbar, among other dinner activities. Our theme for 2018 is "Building Bridges Together," which will be the focus of our keynote speaker and other activities throughout the evening. This year's dinner will also feature the presentation of Akano Awards, sponsored by Great Lakes Honda, to be able to appreciate some of the contributions and the work that Akano members continue to do in this community. All of you are welcome to come and join us. I'm sure some of you may be here and may be hearing about Black History Month dinner celebration for the first time. Please feel free to make time and opportunity to come out and celebrate with us. At the end of the bench there, I will leave our poster. I will also leave some contact information if you'd like to contact us and buy a ticket so that you can come and you can all celebrate and be able to look back and just have a good evening together. So, feel free to come and join us, and we'll end up, we'll end by saying, Akano, bringing people together. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I've, before I read the proclamation, I've had the pleasure of going to that dinner for a few years now, and it's a fantastic dinner. I encourage everybody in the community to consider, if you're free, you should go to it. It is, it is a great meal, and it's culturally a lot of fun. And I just want to repeat, Saturday, February 24th, from 5:00 to 11:00, Grand Gardens North. It's a really great event, and I'd encourage the community to support it. So, I have a proclamation for Black History Month. Whereas in December 1995, the House of Commons officially recognized February as Black History Month, following a motion introduced by the first Black Canadian woman elected to Parliament, the Honorable Jean Augustine. And whereas the proud legacy of Black Canadians goes back to the early beginnings of Canadian history. And whereas Black History Month is an opportunity to celebrate the achievements and the contributions of Black Canadians, as well as share their history, their contribution, and their culture. Now, therefore, I, Christian Provencean, was Mayor of the City of Sioux-Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2018 as Black History Month in the City of Sioux-Sault Ste. Marie. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, our next item is 5.2, Shape the Sioux, New Official Plan. Don McConnell, Director of Planning, is in attendance, along with others of his staff, and they have a presentation, and it also refers to a council report that's on 6.10.
Okay, so, Mr. McConnell, you have the floor. I think you have a number of your planning colleagues with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As council is aware, we're in the process of starting the process to create a new official plan. This project is being led by Peter Tenazal, and very ably assisted by Jonathan Kirkel and Patrick Lowe. And to kick off this event, we've created a very short video that we'd like to share with you now.
Imagine more places to re-
That was pretty short.
It's actually a little bit longer than that, Mr. Mayor.
Imagine more places to relax and have fun, more bike trails and farmers' markets. Imagine more affordable housing and ways to get around the city for those without a car. A city where people and companies want to invest in and call home. An official plan is the roadmap that will make this vision a reality. It's the most important city planning document that guides and shapes the development in our community. It answers questions such as what roads, parks, or schools will be needed? Where will new housing, jobs, and shops be located? What transportation choices will be available to us? And how can we create neighborhoods and places that people feel connected to and proud of? Our current official plan was written over 20 years ago. Much has changed since then. Now is the time to reestablish a new long-term vision for our city, as well as update the official plan to make it consistent with other city and provincial policies. Shape the Sioux is a community-led initiative that will do just that, though we cannot do this without you. It's important that you, your family, and neighbors get involved to make sure that the new official plan meets your needs. It will affect you and future generations to come. To learn more and find out how you can get involved, visit and explore our easy-to-use and immersive website. It is a one-stop shop for everything you need to know. Join the discussion on Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram. Attend one of our upcoming events, like a public meeting, or look for us at the pop-up display booth. Our frequently updated calendar on our website will provide you with details such as times and locations. And if we can't meet in person, we will have other ways for you to share your input. Have questions, comments, or suggestions? Send us an email. We invite you to envision how our city could look like in the future. This is your opportunity to make your voice count.
Mr. McConnell, did you have anything you were looking at beyond that?
Not really, Mr. Mayor. This is an invitation to the community to participate. This is a project that will take up to two years to complete. We wanted to establish a forum and put in place a system where the people could get in touch with us, and we can go out and meet with people as well, as part of our community engagement. And you should know, Mr. Mayor and council, that video was produced entirely in-house, as I see one of the councillors has already recognized the voiceover person on it. Is your corporate affairs officer? Yes, she is.
Thank you. Well, thank you for that, Mr. McConnell. Council, do you have any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Mayor, I believe you'll need to-
Yeah. Counselor Christian.
... or your pre-existing conflict.
Did you want me to leave this? Sure. So, council, we're just moving on to 5.3, which I have a conflict on. There you go.
Mr. Acting Mayor, members of council, I'd like to give you a little background on some issues that have arisen concerning this item. On your addendum, there is a request for postponement from Mr. Marshall of Sprucehaven due to the inability of his counsel to appear tonight. Council needs to decide whether a postponement is something you're willing to consider. You would need to have a mover or a seconder for it, and then vote on the postponement. In addition to that, we have additional delegations on the addendum. In told, we have four delegations wishing to speak tonight. Three of those delegations are from out of town, and I think really, certainly, they are to be here tonight, and they're ready to proceed, should council not wish to postpone. If council does wish to postpone, it would be staff's view that the council give the indulgence to hear from the presenters' delegations who are out of town and don't wish to incur additional expense to come. If you do that, we would need to restrict it to their presentations and questions of the presentation, but we would not have comment or consideration of that. I know one of the presenters is, has indicated to me that she is willing to come back, should council postpone it, and so she may wish to offer her comments at that time. So, having said that, council, if we can move ahead, and, Mr. Acting Mayor, if you can seek to see if there's a mover and a seconder to consider a postponement of the matter.
Counsel, do we have a mover and a seconder to move to postponement?
I should mention, Mr. Acting Mayor and council, that Mr. Marshall is in attendance, and if there's a question that you wish to ask on his request for postponement, he is available for that.
Counselor Hoopinen, you had your hand up. You want to move?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Actually, I would like to move, but I need a couple of answers to a couple of questions first.
Would-
Would there be a date for the postponement that Mr. Marshall is requesting?
That hasn't, that hasn't been identified.
Okay.
Mr. Marshall is present, and we can ask him, Mr. Marshall, if you would please come up to the delegation mic, we can ask if he's willing to consider a definite date for the postponement.
Okay, folks, thank you, and we appreciate all the thought and all of the effort that council has been, has put forward on this, on this bylaw. As far as a postponement is concerned, what has happened is our attorney, Mr. Poitras, was unexpectedly rushed to the hospital when he was halfway through collecting some critical information regarding the animals that we have, their ages, and so on. So, he, he had begun to develop this, to present tonight. Unfortunately, it just was not possible.
So, would, how much time are you requesting?
It looks, it looks like two weeks works for him, because he is now just out of, just out of the hospital, and he's begun today to try to put together the information that he needs, and that information is critical stuff. It has to do with veterinarians?
Yep. We, this, the question is, if you're asking for postponement, that you're prepared essentially to present at next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Hoopinen, does that satisfy your, your question?
Yes, it does, Mr. Acting Mayor. I do have a question procedurally. The addendum that we received from two councillors, where does that play into this whole scenario?
Through you, Counselor Hoopinen, through Mr. Acting Mayor, the motion that's on the addendum would be dealt with when the whole item is considered. So, if the item is postponed tonight, that won't be dealt with until the item comes back.
That answers my question. Thank you.
So, so, do we have a mover?
I was going to say.
And we've got Counselor Hoopinen moving, and we have Counselor Kompodich seconding. So, do we have?
Mr. Mayor, just so, Mr. Acting Mayor, members of council, just so we're clear, the motion would then be to postpone the item to the February 20th council meeting.
If we move, if we vote on the postponement, can we then raise the issue of the folks from out of town being able to speak tonight, or should we raise it before we vote on the postponement?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, I would ask for council's indulgence to hear from presenters who wish to present tonight.
So, should we include that in the postponement, that we will hear from those folks tonight?
We can. If council wishes, I can add in. Just so it's clear to council, the motion will indicate that wording as well.
Counselor Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just procedurally as well.
All right.
There is an amending resolution on, in our agenda. If that resolution is dealt with, does it not make the deferral redundant?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Nero, some, some may see it that way. The only caution I would give you is you would have to consider the item tonight in order for that to-
So, we, we wouldn't be able to speak to the amendment unless we did the, the whole thing? The whole issue?
Procedurally, you should do it that way.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on procedure? So, Counselor Hoopinen, if you want to speak to the deferral, and then we'll look for a dissenter? Do you want to speak? Is there any, I'll allow you an opportunity to speak on the deferral?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I'm, I'm quite fine if council agrees with the deferral. I mean, if the marshals need extra time, I think it's important that, that they are accommodated. This is an important issue, and I think there's a lot at stake here, and I want to make sure that both sides are very clear on the matter, both sides. So, I'm, I'm fine with that, and I'm also very comfortable and happy that council has agreed that the presenters who are here from out of town can also do their presentation. So, that's good. Thank you.
Is there anybody that would like to speak against the deferral? Okay, seeing none?
I have a vote.
Yeah. So, a show of hands, those for the deferral, nice and high? Those against?
Mr. Acting Mayor, members of council, while that, the item then is postponed until February 20th, the first delegation is Julie Woodier, Campaigns Director for Zoo Check. Mrs. Woodier has indicated that she may wish to come up and do her presentation at the February 20th meeting then. I might just ask her to come up to the microphone and confirm that.
Counselors, just a reminder that we're going to limit to questions relating specifically to the presentations. Welcome to council.
Thank you very much. I would prefer to come back and speak to the issue on the day that it's going to be voted on, so I'm happy to come back in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, our next presenter is not here yet. I've received an email that his plane is delayed. He should be here about a quarter after 5:20, after 5:00. That is Andrew Lantini, from Canada's Accredited Zoos and Aquariums Ethics and Compliance Committee. I would ask if our third presenter, Paul Goulet, if he's present? Is Paul Goulet present?
No.
Okay, council, what we will do then, I do know Mr. Lantini is coming. I shall watch for him and explain the situation when he gets here, and again, ask for your indulgence if he does wish to speak tonight. Until then, we can move on to the consent agenda.
Okay. Counsel, we're moving to consent. Any items on consent? Counselor Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
You're quite welcome.
You still going to keep acting, or?
Yeah.
Guess you are. Okay, the item six, what is it here, 6.? Hang on. Sorry. 6.3, Update Retention of Restructuring Lawyer Fee?
Just, just one moment. Counselor Shoemaker, you got a procedural issue?
Yes, I wasn't in the room when conflicts were declared on this matter, but I'd like to declare conflict on this matter, as my law firm represents one of the parties involved in the CCAA litigation.
Thank you. Counselor Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. So, the 6.3, Update Retention Restructuring Lawyer. The half a million dollars that we'll now be at, my question is probably through you to Mr. CAO, do you see that this half a million dollars in legal fees could be recovered sometime in the future? Mr. Horstman, I certainly remain supportive, as I think that as we seek to recover multimillions of dollars in taxes, outstanding taxes, but I'm just wondering, can this, I don't think I've ever asked the question, can the legal fees be tagged on to the, the debt of the outstanding taxes, so that sometime in the future, we may actually have hope of recovering the legal fees as well?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, the, that is, this is a different process. It's the CCAA process, so the legal council that we've retained is for our representation within that process. So, we would not be really having any opportunity to-
Okay.
-apply to the tax bill. Our agreement in principle is what we've gotten as a result of-
Sure. Well, it's still worth half a million dollars to go after the multimillions. I think we're up to, what, 26 million or something now in outstanding taxes, so I certainly support this. Other items, Mr. Mayor?
Anybody else in 6.3? Seeing none, go ahead, Counselors.
6.5, Finance Committee Revised Terms of Reference?
Sure.
Under the committee composition, I don't know really who to direct this to, whether it's the CFO, Shelly Shell, or members of the committee. Who's the chair of this committee?
Counselor Shoemaker.
Oh, Counselor Shoemaker, okay. I'm sure the CFO can answer. Under the committee composition, do you see the same number of members of council appointed along with the two new external members, Ms. Shell?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, staff is just a resource on the committee now, and my understanding, and I'm pleased if anybody else on the committee, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there would be three or five councillors, plus the two external. So, there would be potentially five or seven on that committee.
Okay, how many councillors do we have on it now?
Five.
We do have five now?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we're not looking to increase the number. We, it wouldn't be any more than what's already there, in terms of members of council?
In terms of members of council, correct.
Yeah, thank you. Under the role and mandate in terms of reference, would the Finance Committee be prepared to hear delegations from the public throughout the year, in addition to the public input outreach that occurs in, at budget time?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, this was formalized more so in the terms of reference. There never was anything that said that delegations couldn't be presented. It follows the same, and that's why we just put it's the same policy as through regular council meetings.
Right, so if people do want to make a delegate, make a presentation as a delegation to our Finance Committee sometime throughout the year, they can simply get in touch with staff and ask that they get on an agenda at some point, I would guess.
Through staff or through the chair of the committee?
Sure. Which would be Counselor Shoemaker. Thank you. And then, lastly, under the additional responsibilities, the bullet point about addition of oversight of service level reviews, including proposed changes to existing service levels, or the introduction of new services or programs being delivered, that's sounding to me like it's actually starting to take on quite a bit of council work. Can you expand on that a little bit? Because it's starting to sound, as I say, to me like it's, like this committee's starting to say, you know, under their responsibilities, that they would be looking at oversight on these service levels, and that makes me a wee bit uneasy.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, that may be best answered by the chair of the committee. They were more involved in what they wanted on it, and I think they'd have more insight.
Okay, so through you, Mr. Mayor, I guess to the chair, Counselor Shoemaker? Just do you understand what I'm trying to ask here, just kind of where that line is?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Myers. I certainly think I'm aggregating the committee's opinion, but I think the key words there are to oversee them. So, whatever council would send to us in terms of how council directed the committee to oversee service level reviews, or to, you know, study or examine proposed changing to current service levels. So, if it would, you know, be dependent on what the, what the job was that council tasked us to do. So, if that was to hire a consultant to look at something, and council directed the Finance Committee to do so, I think that's the overseeing role we'd have. If council wanted us to, you know, meet with the department and aggregate information from them and come back with a recommendation, that would be overseeing, you know, based on what, what council directed us to do. So, I'm not sure it's anything other than what council tasks us to do on any individual occasion.
Okay, so just to clarify, like, right now, if council, a councillor brought forward a resolution that directly related to a service level, and council supported the request from that councillor in a resolution that would be directed, of course, at this time to staff, is this putting another layer in there, that would we be, that we're supposed to direct that request first to the Finance Committee, and then they're going to deal with staff? Is this, this is what's concerning to me about this. Right now, I see it as, if I have an issue about a service level, whether it might be something new, say snow removal as an example, I bring forward a resolution, council discusses the resolution, passes it or doesn't pass it. If they pass it, it's asking staff to report back to council. So, I'm, that's where I'm trying to find what this means.
Yeah, I don't think it, I don't think it's intended to duplicate the work, certainly. But, but give another avenue. You know, if you, if you didn't want staff to just come back with a report that said, here's, there's, here's the cons, you might, you might task Finance Committee with working with staff to delve into an issue a little more deeply.
Okay, thank you. So, it's not that it has to be that way, it's another option?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
I don't think that that's clear. As someone who wasn't involved in, in doing that work, when I read the document, I thought back to our first year, where we couldn't- back to our first year, where we couldn't, as a council, agree to let the Finance Committee prioritize extra spending. And I read, like, so we, that motion failed because we were concerned about passing off too much of our responsibility to a subcommittee. And when I read this document, it seemed like we were passing off a significant amount of our responsibility to a subcommittee of five of us with two external part people.
Yep.
So you have seven people, two of whom are unelected, making what seemed to me on their own volition, possibly on their own volition, decisions and recommendations in service levels. And I didn't know if you took into consideration the fact that we were 12, now we're, will be 10, and it's, I was uncomfortable with the breadth of the responsibility that we're delegating from this body to that body. And it wasn't clear to me in that, that it was, the committee could just do what we asked it to do. It was, it was, the committee can get up and decide to do what it wants to do. And I, and I thought that the area of responsibility was really, a lot of those things should be discharged by this body in open council. That's the way I read it.
Me too.
So we'll go with Counselor Christian and then Counselor Nero. Yeah, sure.
The recommendations could, the recommendations can come from the Finance Department, or Finance Committee, but it's up to council to decide. And I think the way you were saying, it's our, yeah, I just want to leave it as simple. It's a recommendation from the Finance Committee. It's up to council to make the decision.
I appreciate ultimately council would have to force it, but when I understood what Counselor Shoemaker was saying was, we're, we will be there to do what's delegated to us. And I don't read the policy that way. I think you can make decisions to do things that you believe you'd like to do or want to look into doing. I don't think the way it structured and reads is just a matter of what we send, what this body sends to that body.
I think, sorry, just on that issue, one of the examples we used at the Finance Committee was the decision we made on daycare services. We, in that instance, delegated it to a specific committee that looked at that. Well, we're saying, the Finance Committee already has that capacity to, or should have that capacity to be able to look at a change in service level like that, or the addition of a new service level if Counselor Myers, for example, wanted to refer her Windrow motion to the Finance Committee. The expansion, reduction, or change in service level is something we're saying the Finance Committee should properly be tasked with if directed by council.
Yeah, it's that last piece that I see is missing. Counselor Nero? They're all jumping handy, Counselor Christian. I'll go right to you next.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, further to that, I don't see it being any different in the way that we treat what council sends to Parks and Recreation. If there's some work to do on the request from council-
Yeah.
-I think the Finance Committee is in a good position to do that work and to get input from the community, delegations and that, those matters. So I see it exactly the same as Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee operating for those kinds of things.
My suggestion would be, we should be, we should add some clarity to that point of your jurisdiction on that. The jurisdiction on that committee is as delegated by council. I just don't see that as clear.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, accept that sometimes the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee will bring something that came from the community back to council in a report from staff. So if something comes to the Finance Committee from municipal input or a delegation that wants to speak to Finance Committee, the request could flow from the Finance Committee to council. There are no, there are no decisions that ultimately are going to be made by the Finance Committee other than decide if it should be brought to council or not.
Yeah. Counselor Christian? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all the comments that were made. When I read this, when I read this item, in principle, I like it. I think it's, we've all served on different boards, et cetera, and there needs to be that oversight by our body. So I, you know, I think it's a very good idea. But to your point, Mr. Mayor, and to Counselor Myers' questions, that was my only concern, but it sounds, based on what I've heard from the committee members, that it's really a matter of sequence, for lack of a better word. Generally, it'll be something that the council will charge the committee to investigate and do legwork on. But as Counselor Nero pointed out, there may be issues because you're in that realm, you may have requests from the public coming forward, and you would, you would, they would bring those through your committee. So I accept all that. I would appreciate, as the Mayor pointed out, that there be slight modification to the wording, but I think the spirit of what you're, you're saying is in there. I think it just needs to be a little bit clearer, that's all. But I agree with the, with the direction. I agree with the terms of reference. I think good work because I do believe that we need this, this, this committee in place. I just have one question, and it's a minor, a minor question. And it talks about the criteria that will be used for capital expenditures, and I know that there's an open resolution regarding supplemental items and applying criteria to them. So I don't know if this is a question that I should direct to the Chair or to the CFO, but I'm wondering if, if that same type of criteria could be used for supplemental items, just as a guide for, for council going forward. Perhaps CFO Shell can respond to that.
So we just need her mic? If you can please put the treasurer's mic on, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. The criteria that is currently used for the capital projects, basically it ranks it health and safety, legislated, maintenance of assets, and growth. So, I mean, that's just it in a nutshell. I don't know if it would work for your supplementary items necessarily, but we can look at it, I guess, as a finance committee if council directs us to. We can go there.
All right, that's fair. And I, and I think that, you know, that would probably be something, whether it be done by formal resolution, I certainly, that's, Counselor Shoemaker knows that this is an item that I wish could be addressed, so if it requires a resolution of council, I'll bring that forward. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, anybody else on this issue? Seeing none, Counselor Myers, do you have any matters left in the consent agenda?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Six point seven, funding for closed captioning of council meetings.
Go ahead.
And I actually did check with the mover on this. I had a question around whether or not we had any sense of determining the level of demand for closed captioning. I know that we have a level, we can probably determine the level of demand for closed captioning within our community period in general on television viewing and so on and so forth. However, I'm not so sure how we determine the level as it relates to specifically coverage of council meetings. I'd like to think that every single person wants to watch council, but perhaps that's not the case. So I'm just wondering if we could determine the level of demand for closed captioning for city council meetings?
Are you asking if we have determined that?
Well, I think that when we look at the expenditure that's attached to this item, you know, I mean, it's not in our budget, I guess, to do it. I don't think we budgeted to proceed with this. We were, I think we directed to find funding for it. Was that not the procedure?
I think this would have to be referred to the 2019 budget.
Budget, yeah. So, but for me, I would kind of like to know what the need is so that we could relate that to the spend.
I don't have that information. I think we'd have to ask the clerk if he had it, but to my knowledge, I don't think we have the specifics of that information.
No.
On the same matter, Counsel Butland?
Yes, we don't have a handle on it, and it's very, very difficult to get a handle on it. 12% of the population have some sort of disability, if you call it, so out of that 12%, how many are deaf or hard of hearing? I want to thank Frank for IT, from IT, for putting this back on the table. Counselor Turco and I are on the Accessibility Committee, and when I brought this up probably a year and a half ago, the emotion expressed by some of those folks really made it clear that, yeah, Canadian Hearing Society rep said this would be a great thing for us. The financing, yeah, I understand that, but my question would be, were we to go off the air this evening with no sound for people, you can bet within two weeks we'd have this back on for everybody to hear us. So that's the majority. This is a minority of people, and hard of hearing people have a difficult time, as it is, in living in our world, if you will. So punting it down the road to the next study or accessibility strategy, or putting it into the budget, and let's face it, when it gets lost in the very massive $100 million capacity, this may not make the grade. I didn't want to put resolutions forward and say, we should finance this now. I repeat, if we went off the air this evening with no sound, two weeks from now, it would be before us, the sound system would be improved, and everybody would be watching us. So that's, that's, that's it, I guess, but I think let's, let's deal with it sooner rather than later, because though, when you say, well, nobody's approached me, no one's called, as someone at the Accessibility Committee Room said this morning, if they call you, they can't hear you when you respond at any rate, and that really, really hits home. So I'm hoping we can deal with it sooner than later without a resolution. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Turco, and then Counselor Hoopinon.
Thank you. I can add much more than fellow Counselor Butland. This has been identified through you, Mr. Mayor, as one of the barriers of the Accessibility Committee, and I think you alluded to the football terminology punted down the field. Speaking of football this weekend, this has been on discussion here at this council almost as long as I've been on council. And again, at the sake of repeating myself, I've been here for a few years, so, you know, we're going to move it down the field more. I'm not sure that's what the accessibility is looking for. I think they're looking for a solution. I do have a question, Mr. Mayor, to perhaps Tom Vare. Is this your area, Tom, about the accessibility and the closed caption? Have we really looked at all the avenues of funding? And my opinion, with all due respect, I don't think we really have because everything else, I use closed caption on television, as my rap can attest to. We love to read it as well as hear it for some reason. So, and a lot of the shows that we watch, particularly the public service ones, the Ontario Channel or the other channels, it's sponsored by some corporate sponsor. Closed caption is sponsored by Bell, whatever, Shaw. So we've really addressed all the avenues we can get corporate sponsors?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Turco. Frank Cochmeli, the manager of information technology, put together the report, so recognize his good work on this. To answer your question, though, we have not gone out to seek external sponsorship funding for this service.
That's maybe something, Mr. Mayor, that we can really get serious about, particularly people, organizations and corporations that, you know, are involved with accessibility. So there's a number in our community, and also some national companies might consider this as well. Thank you.
Okay, so we have Counselor Hoopinon, then Counselor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is great, but I just have a question for either Ms. Kenya or Mr. Vare. I believe that this is actually a law now that we have to do this, so this may help everyone with the vote, which I'm sure you wouldn't have had any problem with anyway. So if we could have that answered, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hoopinon. I don't know that it's an express requirement that we have closed captioning, but certainly we have an obligation to be barrier free. We're committed to it, even before the law was passed, this council was committed to being barrier free. And accessibility legislation now, it's definitely the direction we're going in. It's, it's not a mistake to bring it in sooner rather than later.
Thank you. I don't think anybody's objecting, but I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Counselor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wonder if we can get a actual quote or several quotes on what it would be to provide the service. Is it 12, is it 15, is it 20,000? Because that's the range that they've given us in the report. And then from there, perhaps council can direct that it be paid from X, Y, or Z reserve for this year and refer the ongoing expense to the budget for next year. So I'm prepared to move that if necessary, because it is, as the report says, it's a fairly insignificant amount of money to service those in need in our community. So I wonder if we can get some estimates or hard estimates or quotes on what it would be to provide the service.
Yeah, we'll have, the clerk can answer that. I don't think you need to move a motion that's different than the motion we have here, the motion that, I don't think the motion we have here prohibits or restricts that. It instructs to move the project forward, maybe not as quickly as council is directing, but I think that staff could hear that direction, so I don't, I don't think another motion's required, but Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. The reason there's a range there is because we can't, there's no specific end time on a council meeting. So it's, we do have the-
That makes a lot of sense, hey, Counselor Shoemaker?
Yes.
You know, we do have a hard cost per hour. It's just, we looked at estimating annual time for a council meeting.
So perhaps through you, Mr. Mayor, to the, oh, is the CFO not there?
She's unavailable right now.
I see. She's coming back in the room as we speak. Through you to the CFO, is there any reserve accounts that would, like unforeseen reserve that we could pay for this, this year, as soon as we could get it up and running, and then refer the, the ongoing cost to the budget next year?
Okay, I just stepped in, my apologies, so can you-
Closed captioning. Is there any reserve accounts that we could use to fund the $12,000 to $20,000 expense?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. We always have our contingency reserve for such things, but I hesitate to use reserves for ongoing items, but yes, you could use it for one year if council so desired, and then add it to the budget going forward.
And what's the contingency reserve at?
I think about 1 million uncommitted.
The clerk has something to add.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. I should clarify, there are two amounts in there, and what you need to understand is one amount is for the broadcast, the Shaw broadcast, the other amount is for the web streaming. So you would, if you want to close caption both, it does take you up to a potential maximum of 35,000.
Okay, so council, I think that this motion is fine. I think staff has heard pretty clearly that you want some solutions on how to move this ahead sooner rather than later, and I don't think that this prevents that. So unless the clerk thinks we need to amend the motion, the motion can carry with the consent agenda, and we'll have staff work on the process to make that happen, as Counselor Butland says, sooner rather than later.
I get, I guess my concern is that the motion's pretty specific, that it be referred to the next multi-year barrier removal plan. So I would, I would ask that it be brought back with-
Yeah, it's got to be put in the, this has to be put in the barrier removal plan, but that won't prevent staff from figuring out a solution to get this moving sooner rather than later. What would, what would staff need to get, what does, what does staff need? Does staff need anything further than this to get this moving?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to council, perhaps I might draft up a resolution with Counselor Shoemaker as a sponsor and Counselor Butland as a second, and we can deal with it under the eights.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on from six point seven then. Did you have anything else, Counselor Myers? Go on.
Okay, the next one is six point 11, transit advertising. It's a very quick question on this one. Is this for Mr. Vare or Mr. Girardi?
Mr. Vare.
Mr. Vare.
It's real quick. Who is this company? Where are they based?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers. The company is based out of Sudbury and was, is an offshoot of the previous provider of the service.
Okay, I wondered if it was the same company, okay?
Yeah.
And then the second one is, is this solely for the advertising on vehicles, or does it include shelters?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, this, excuse me, this includes the advertising on the, on the buses themselves, the vehicles and within the buses.
So not the shelters, right? Not the, not the transit shelters, the vehicles?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. That's it for that one, Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Christian has a question on the same topic.
Was asked.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Myers. On that same topic, go ahead, Counselor Shoemaker. Can we have Counselor Shoemaker's mic, please?
Brilliant. He's trying to keep up with this.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Commissioner Vare. Is there, I know we brought a resolution a while back to look at advertising on other items that aren't currently being advertised. So is there a plan or is there a hope that we might get some advertising, a report on advertising on shelters or within the bus terminal itself at some point in the near future?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. Yes, it is something that staff is looking at, the options to have advertising in those other venues as well as other city properties.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so, sorry. On the same matter, Counselor Turco? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick follow-up. I just thought about it. Mr. Vare, is this, it says arena here as well. Northern Transit and Arena Advertising. Does this expand the territory for this organization to sell in our arenas as well?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Turco. No, this, our agreement with this company is solely for the transit portion.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anybody else on the agenda item? Seeing none, Counselor Myers?
The last. 6.13, request to rename Shore Road to Rotary Parkway. All of a sudden, Mr. Caracoz is listening to me. This is really exciting. Rotary's contributed significantly to various aspects within Bellevue Park. Most recently in this past week, $20,000 donation to our splash pad in Bellevue Park. And this is their 100th anniversary year and the renaming of this roadway to Rotary Parkway is fitting legacy. And we are very glad to see it happen in Ward Two. It's best ward in the city, I'll add that.
Okay.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so it's a great recognition of, and to the Rotarians that are here tonight, thank you for all your support of our community. I think you've done a tremendous amount of great work. You see a lot of that great work in Bellevue Park, so this is really, really fitting. So we thank you for that. Okay, so we are done with Counselor Myers. Counselor Christian, you had some matters?
6.6. The Public Library question through you. Who is, I think this goes to CFO Shell. How much, I'm reading in here that there's the library expansion reserve. Do you know offhand how much is left in that reserve?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. There's approximately $430,000 left at the end of this year.
Okay. And then there's just a point of clarification. It says in there, to date, 50,000 was utilized to complete the recarpeting. Funding comes from, through library operations. I guess I'm just asking for clarification on library operations. I'm just trying to understand that statement through you to CFO Shell.
Through library operations means the library themselves paid for the first half of the project out of their own operational funds. They do not have the money in their 2018 budget to be able to afford to do it.
So it was built into their operating budget?
The library probably has best to speak to that, and I think they were going to be here.
Hi. My name is Matthew McDonald, acting director at the library. So for 2017, we took the funds from our maintenance budget and paid for the carpeting from that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I needed. That's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Anybody else on that agenda item? That's it for you, Counselor?
That's it.
Christian? Anybody else with consent items? Counselor Shoemaker, we have six minutes. Will yours take more than six minutes?
Nope.
Very good. Go ahead.
Through you to the Director of Engineering, there's 6.16 and 6.14. These are both sole sourcing of engineering services. And I was wondering, I read the reports and am wondering why in this instance we're choosing to sole source these projects.
So between Ms. McConnell, Mr. Vare.
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. The reason we want to single source these, this work, this firm is primarily because the fees are largely dependent on field time. We don't, we don't want to go to a tender, or pardon me, a request for a proposal in this case because this firm has done so much work in this area. They tend to be our go-to outfit in this work. The structural engineer that has looked at these aqueducts every two years or so is the same fellow that is going to be doing the design. So in this case, our recommendation is it's the same professional that has been looking after these aqueducts that do this work. We don't see it as necessarily a very competitive situation because they're so familiar with this particular project.
So is the, would it be correct in saying, I guess, that because of their familiarity with it, it would be best to keep it with the same professional?
That's essentially what I'm saying. They've done the inspections all these years and you're essentially changing from one professional to another midstream potentially. If you went for a proposal and you got a low, low price and we were compelled to take the low price, then it's just not, it's just not a good idea to switch midstream. The other thing is the prices are very difficult to, the prices are very difficult to estimate at the beginning of a project like this because you don't know how long a contractor is going to be out there. It has to be, the contractor can be there two months, he can be there four months. And we need people on the ground, we need eyes in the field as this concrete work is being done. So we need full-time supervision. So it's not like it's money, if this, the $95,000 that we're suggesting here, it's an upset limit right now. We might be getting it done for that. It may cost more, but the bottom line for us is that it is constructed properly and inspected properly in the field so that we can ensure the safety of the motorists. Aqueducts in this case are essentially bridges. They're long and they're parallel to the road in most cases, but they're essentially bridges. There are structural component that needs to support the road.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Counselor Shoemaker, any other matters?
Doesn't look like it, no.
Counselor Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item 6.15 for our Director of Engineering as well, Mr. Elliott. The report is the completion of the EA on McNabb Street, St. George's Avenue. One of the improvements identified is to provide a pedestrian crossover of St. George's west of the intersection with McNabb. Can you explain for better for the council and the public what we're speaking of, a crossover as compared to an overcross?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero, a pedestrian crossover is an at-grade crossover. There's different forms. Some of them can have overhead signage, but in this case, the pedestrian crossover that is being recommended here is essentially signs, signposts on each side with flashing, probably flashing amber lights. You may have seen them in Sudbury, Thunder Bay, and many other places. Most cities are starting to incorporate these pedestrian crossovers, and I see that as likely the form that we would do here. It's the product of environmental assessment, so we essentially have to do this, and I'd like to do it when we resurface the road within the next few years. The other thought we have is when we do these, we should probably do more than one in the city and do a promotional campaign and get people educated in what you do as a pedestrian or what you do as a driver. So that's our intention right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Elliott. Second question on that. With these crossovers, where they're used now or here in the future, do they actually replace a crossing guard? If a crossing guard was warranted at a location either in use now or someone that's, some study that may be asking for one in the future, would something like this replace that use?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero, I'm not sure I can answer that program or that question yet. I'd have to research a little further to see if they would actually replace a crossing guard. I expect it would depend on the traffic volume and the warrants associated with crossing guard situations.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Elliott.
Okay, so we're going to leave the consent agenda, well, does anybody else have anything else on the consent agenda? Counselor Butland, you will have to come back because we have the planning agenda. So we'll come back to Counselor Hollingsworth and Butland. So we have to go to the planning agenda, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under agenda item 7.71. 43 Sinclair Drive, a motion by Councilors Myers and Bruni, resolved that the reported senior planner concerning condominium approval application number 57T-185017 be received and that council grant draft approval of the proposed vacant land condominium subject to the following conditions. One, that the owner enters into agreements with PUC Distribution, Inc. and Public Utilities Commission with respect to electrical and water servicing to the development and that the agreements are registered title upon final connection. And two, that the owner adheres to the previously approved site plan agreement dated July 2, 2017, more specifically including, but not limited to, stormwater management, site servicing, and site grading, and that the legal department be directed to prepare the necessary bylaws to effect this approval.
Okay. Mr. McConnell, could you just give the viewers at home a brief review of this and the application itself?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This application's a little bit different than most planning applications council deals with because there's no land use decisions to be made. The question before council has to deal with ownership. The subject property is a property that is currently being developed as a series of rental townhouses off of Dacey Road on Sinclair Drive. It's part of a, the work that has already been done is part of a much larger parcel of land. And what the applicant is asking for is what's called a vacant land condominium approval, which allows him to take the large blocks of land and divide them up legally so that each can be developed separately. You still cannot go in and buy an individual unit within there, but if for development purposes, it makes a lot more sense. It is recommended for approval by staff and Mr. Spatafor is in attendance tonight should council have any questions.
Okay. So, welcome to council, Mr. Spatafor. Were you looking to make a presentation or did you want to answer questions?
No, Mr. Mayor. If there's any specific questions.
Do we have any questions of the applicant's legal counsel? Seeing none, is there anybody here opposed to the application? Anybody here opposed to the application? Seeing none. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff? We can have a vote on the matter, please. Home favor? Carried. Thank you, Mr. Spatafor. Okay, so we'll go back to the consent agenda. So we have Counselor Hollingsworth and then Counselor Butland. Would you like to defer to him? We can put him first.
Go ahead.
6.9, Future Sault Ste. Marie Project Update. And I think this is pretty important to go by without even a brief comment. An offshoot of the Community Adjustment Committee and with a new name, Future Sault Ste. Marie. It's a good one. I want to say good outreach by you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Vare for meeting with 20 different groups. And I understand that those 20 groups really represented maybe 50 different community organizations. So that is, that's about as good as, pardon me, as well as one would expect. And there, I'm told, widespread support for the plan, and that's good. We are poised for success, but people will say, we've done this before, and I was part of one before, building an extraordinary community. And I remember one night we filled, yeah, with hundreds and hundreds of people. Did it go anywhere? Well, I think probably some would say it was a bit of a disappointment. So the fact that we are poised, it almost demands that something does happen. We need a winner or winners, if at all possible. And if anything comes forward, let's attempt to expedite it. And I think we're doing that. The Noron proposal, I understand, went very well. We need to keep our, everything on the front burner. Let's do it because people are expecting us to happen. We need some traction, though. The proof will be in the pudding, but a great start. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Butland. I do want to recognize Mr. Vare and the work that not only he, but his department did in supporting our efforts on this. And there's been a lot of work gone in, but there are a lot of eager volunteers, a lot of eager community leaders that want to get involved. I agree with you, we have to keep it moving and we have to produce some results, but I think we're well on our way.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I had this written down. A good start, and it's noted, my colleague in his summit concept along with Counselor Hollingsworth, that would be a great beginning to have folks from Sault Ste. Marie who have been, I guess, somewhat successful in touting Sault Ste. Marie and what we can do specifically. As I say, that's a great starting point. Thanks.
Planning for that is going well. Thank Counselor Christian for all his effort there. Counselor Hollingsworth, did you? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Again, just on the subject. Again, as you know, I support this 100% and I think it's very positive. We're using positive quite often, but it really is. And I do have a couple of questions, but I just want to again echo what Counselor Butland and our mayor has been saying. Thank you to all those out there in our community that have been involved with different committees and so forth. Just looking at this report and going through it, there's some incredible people that are going to be on the roundtable, that have excellent life experience, that have wonderful professional experience. May I make a suggestion that the list of names that are on the roundtable, not everyone may know them or even know their background. I think it would do it justice to the plan and to these individuals if we have a small bio of these individuals. I don't know if we should be on the website or where, but...
That's a good suggestion. We are working on that. We're going to take the Future SSM web portal and we're going to adjust and adapt that portal to be the community development portal on a going-forward basis. And we certainly could include, we certainly will include those, that information on that.
Okay. I always think about new people still to our community and they're still getting comfortable with who's who. The other question I have is, I don't know if I directed to you, Mayor, or to Al Horstman or CAO, but many of us around this table, many of us as counselors have forward our names to be on certain committees. And when will we receive feedback on if we're on that committee or not?
Mr. Vare and I will be working through that within the next two weeks. So we wanted to get the roundtable set and we're currently going through the terms of reference and committee membership with the people that will be chairing those committees on the roundtable. And those meetings were set up frankly for this week because of all the time that was taken in the last couple of weeks for other projects. And whatever committees that you've expressed an interest in, you've communicated that to Mr. Vare, I presume, we're going to be going through that within the next week and we'll be back to you within the next two weeks.
And I'm assuming that if you have not expressed an interest, there's still time to...
For you, at any time, you're welcome to express that interest and we'll include you.
Okay. And I do have another question. Again, I'm very happy to see that's on our agenda. And I've asked more than once, especially in the fall, if we could have more frequent updates, and I have not received any feedback or any comments about, yes, that's a good idea, or yes, we can accommodate this. The information that you have in this report tonight is outstanding. And I would like to suggest in the future, when we have a frequent update, that we actually have a quick walkthrough because not everybody has the ability to really read into this. And this is a perfect opportunity tonight for the viewers at home to do a walkthrough. So in the future, can we have frequent update and maybe not on the consent agenda, but a presentation?
Sure. Maybe the next time it's here, we could have Mr. Vare do a full presentation on where we're at and how everything's composed. We can arrange for that within the next, maybe, yeah, sometime in March.
And one final question on this subject. Many people come through City Hall, the lobby, to attend meetings, pay their taxes or whatnot. Shape the Zoo, this particular project, I would really encourage if you would consider this, to put some type of PR material, some type of pull-up banner, something in our lobbies to shout that we're doing this. This is something to be very proud of. And using our lobby as another communication vehicle, I think, is a way to reach out not just to citizens, but outside visitors coming to City Hall because we... because we do have a tremendous number of people living outside our community that visit us that should know about this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, excellent, excellent information and update. Couple of comments. We already did refer to it, and Director of Planning spoke to it. The next item that was under this one, the 6.10, is the Shape the Zoo Planning Department. While traditionally on, you know, and it is, it's about really a re, sort of how we represent an official plan or get to the official plan, and it's a little bit more of the, shall I say, the ground development. But how do you see Shape the Zoo in relationship to the Common Cause and New Direction Plan, Mr. Vare?
We can have both, Mr. Vare. We can have Mr. McConnell speak to that primarily, and then if Mr. Vare had anything to add.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's an excellent question. Shape the Zoo is the creation of a new official plan, which is primarily a land use document. There are certain legal criteria that goes around that, including provincial policy statements that need to be integrated into that. What we're looking at is, as we put that together, and I must say, the timing of Shape the Zoo and Future Sault Ste. Marie could not be better because we already have the Common Cause document, which is forming, forming part of the background to the new official plan. But having a community development roundtable and Future Sault Ste. Marie go forward, we will make sure that the official plan incorporates whatever we need to out of that process into the, into the official plan, which is a legal document. So as I said earlier, the timing of the two projects could not be better. Perhaps for the public's benefit, it's better to think of Shape the Zoo as being focused on what happens on the ground, on land development, whereas the Future Sault Ste. Marie process focuses more on what are the projects? What are the activities and things we need to do as a community in order to move this community forward?
Thank you, Mr. Hollins. And that's exactly it, because the reason I raise this is, and those words I had here, is that I see Shape the Zoo as sort of the ground development plan, but I see there's an intention, too, by Shape the Zoo to go out into the public and seek public input. And in this report, as has been mentioned, we can see that Mr. Vare and the mayor have also done that, done it admirably, and reached hundreds of people really already. And granted, you have targeted organizations, I believe, Mr. McConnell, versus individuals perhaps more, or I should say the other way around. But just to speak to the public period, a couple of the initiatives that you were mentioning, I think, at one of the shows and so on, that you planned to have a table, I think it would really complement one another, and for the public to understand our community planning for the future is happening in this entirety and totality, and you each are going to likely get questions about the other's plan as you go out into the public, because the public doesn't necessarily differentiate. They're just hearing input, plan, and it's all good. So I just wanted to sort of put that bit of spotlight on it, and you did just talk about it. So as these websites, of course, Future Sault Ste. Marie website's been up and running for well over a year now, a year and a half, I think, almost coming up to two years, I think. And then now with this website, I think it's really important how we manage the public input. My final question to you, Mr. Vare, actually, because it is on your item here, 6.9, is when do you anticipate hearing about the final approval for funding from the provincial and federal levels? Because I think that is critical for you getting your, your legs out the door here.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, with the provincial funding through NOHFC, our hope is the March Board meeting will receive their approval. And with Fednor, we haven't received a firm date, but we're hoping it would coincide somewhat with the approval from NOHFC.
Great. Thank you very much for that. Thank you, and again, just kudos. Thanks, everybody.
Anybody else on that agenda item? Counselor Hollingsworth, do you have other agenda items from consent?
Procedural, I think, but, no?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
You're really preoccupied with Counselor Batlin tonight.
Because he's so handsome. 6.8.
6.8.
6.8. Bylaw to restrict the use of vehicles on hub trails. Just for clarification, I'm not sure who direct this to. I'll start with maybe Al Horstman or CAO. In the report, it talks about restrictions on electric bicycles, I guess e-bikes. And is there any discussion about motorized scooters? Because I know that a lot of our citizens are using motorized scooters now. And I know the report talks about a speed limit, but when you're saying it's going to be restricted, are we restricting the motorized scooters?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, I would refer that question to our city solicitor. The e-bikes was specifically mentioned in the report, but I'm not sure in terms of other considerations, but the city solicitor's, she'll be able to respond on those other items.
Ms. Kenny, do you understand the question? Did you hear the question?
I know. Could you repeat it, please?
So we're at 6.8, and the question specifically relates to the restriction on motorized vehicles and the e-bike specifically, but I think the council wants to know what the breadth of that is and whether somebody who uses a motorized scooter on an e-bike, but are you talking like a, one of...
Right. Around town, we have a lot of our citizens now, especially seniors, using these scooters to get around.
Yeah, so the, the e-bikes are prohibited.
Correct.
So those scooters are prohibited, on the hub trail.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yes. Well, that's a, that's a different thing than, this motorized scooter is an e-bike, so...
No, I'm talking about senior citizens, the disabled, that rely on these, I call them scooters, it's probably a poor wording, motorized wheelchairs and along that line.
Yeah, so it doesn't prohibit motorized wheelchairs, if that's...
Exactly. There's so many different models. Thank you for that, Counselor Myers.
So we'll ask the city solicitor to address this.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the counselor. We were trying to avoid real speed and problems on the hub trail that we're getting with people that are, that are riding those e-bikes that you can rent locally. They are not allowed on the hub trail. But an appliance used for mobility, due to mobility issues, for accessibility, those would be permitted. And I'm not going to make the argument here because I'm representing the bylaw, but that would be an argument to be made if you were using one of these for accessibility because that legislation would trump our legislation.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, because I know that the city is working towards the, I still call the cycling plan. I know it's not the cycling plan per se, more it's, Mr. McConnell, it's like wheels, it's like the cycling plan, all wheels, accessibility. So I just want to make sure that... Thank you. Active transportation, right. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else for the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, a motion by counselors Hollingsworth and Bruni, resolved that all items listed under Agenda Item 6, Consent Agenda and Addendum, be approved as recommended.
All in favor? Carried.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Lantini, who was the presenter who was held up by his flight, is present. I'll ask Acting Mayor Christian to come up to the chair. Mr. Acting Mayor, members of council, this is Andrew Lantini, Chair, Canada's Accredited Zoos and Aquariums Ethics and Compliance Committee. I've updated Mr. Lantini on the fact that the item has been postponed to the February 20 meeting and indicated to him that council is willing to let him proceed with his presentation tonight if he was unavailable to come up on February 20th or wished to avoid the cost on that. He's indicated he wishes to avail himself of the opportunity tonight, and he understands that he will make his presentation to you, that you may have questions of him, but it won't go beyond that.
Welcome to council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Acting Mayor and members of council. My apologies for the delay. I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I am Dr. Andrew Lantini. I have worked with wildlife conservation issues for the past 32 years, and I'm currently the curator of amphibians and reptiles at the Toronto Zoo. I've served on Canada's Accredited Zoos and Aquariums Board of Directors for the past two years, and I am, as mentioned, the Chair of CASA's Ethics and Compliance Committee. Part of my PhD research at York University focused at looking, at evaluating stress in wildlife so that we could improve the welfare of the species at risk that we work with. I've seen firsthand the value accredited zoos bring to communities in terms of education, species recovery, animal welfare, tourism, advocacy, and connecting people to nature. It's disheartening when governments consider regulatory changes that affect zoos based on political ideology as opposed to ethical and scientific reflection. In his recent letter to CASA's Executive Director, Mayor Provizano, explained that the decision to return this bylaw was influenced by lack of expertise and resources within the municipality regarding zoos and aquariums. CASA has that expertise, and I would encourage the city to utilize expert scientific opinion available through credible animal welfare agencies such as CASA. Through a science-based approach, CASA standards address the ethical concerns regarding zoos and aquariums and are currently the only pan-Canadian regulations and guidelines that direct zoological facilities within Canada. Founded in 1975, CASA is the leading animal welfare standards development body in Canada. Our standards development process includes expert opinion from researchers, biologists, and academics to ensure our standards reflect the latest scientific research, management, and safety protocols. This year, CASA is enhancing the transparency of our process by expanding and broadening our range of expert consultations. Accredited facilities are held to strict requirements based on international best practices and are evaluated by independent inspectors with expertise in zoo veterinary medicine, animal welfare, and safety protocols. CASA accreditation is a meaningful assurance of compliance. Out of the 165 known zoos in Canada, only 31 meet CASA accreditation standards as assessed by independent inspection and effective enforcement procedures. CASA has strengthened our ethics and compliance protocols. Members who are not upholding CASA standards undergo a thorough investigation, and disciplinary, disciplinary action is imposed when it's required. Recently, some high-profile members have left CASA as a result of the enhanced, enhanced enforcement measures we have in place. CASA has repeatedly extended offers of assistance to the city of Sault Ste. Marie. However, we have not been consulted, and CASA's exclusion is unfitting in a democracy. Even at this meeting, the only organization that was initially invited to consult was Zoo Check, an anti-zoo organization funded for the sole purpose of advocating shutting down zoos. Zoo Check has been working closely with Counselor Kompona to bring this bylaw forward without due consultation. And I urge you to avoid making a rash decision today. Instead, base your actions on ethical and scientific consultation, not on ideology. Please work with CASA's network of animal welfare experts, zoo veterinarians, researchers, and academics, ethicists to create meaningful regulations for your city. Council should seriously consider some of the ramifications should they vote for the proposed bylaw. Mainly, animal welfare societies and zoological facilities currently operating in your city will be left with an unprecedented dilemma of what to do with the animals and their care. Also, animals that can be moved, consideration has not been given to the safety of local residents. The proposed bylaw ignores the troubling reality of the exotic animal black market trade, which is, which will thrive in a regulatory environment without standards of oversight or enforcement. Demand for exotic animals is on the rise in Canada, and Sault Ste. Marie is not immune to that. With this bylaw, instead of having a regulated industry meeting the highest accreditation standards, the only source for the display and use of exotic animals in the city will be an underground illegal industry. CASA standards are increasingly recognized as the benchmark for captive animal welfare across Canada, and we want to work constructively with Sault Ste. Marie as we move forward to deal with this issue. CASA has successfully done this in other jurisdictions such as British Columbia and New Brunswick, who now require CASA accreditations for any zoos operating in those provinces. In Toronto, the new bylaw that fully exempts Toronto Zoo, which has been accredited by CASA since 1975, allows us to use prohibited animals in all of our education programming, and we continue to contribute to our community. I urge counselors to act in the best interest of the city, the residents, and the animals by consulting with animal welfare organizations like CASA and developing meaningful regulations which are reflective of expert opinion, science, and ethics as opposed to political ideology. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir, for your presentation. Counselor Shoemaker, you were first. Remember, we're restricting our questions to the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. You had mentioned in a couple instances to, to base our decision on, on, on facts and evidence rather than ideology. But what if, what if council just, I guess, didn't want to have zoos in, in the city? Why, why would you say that's not recommended? What if our ideology is that we didn't want to have zoos in the city?
Yeah. Well, quite honestly, zoos contribute an awful lot to society today. As I said, we engage in an active conservation, species recovery, education. We contribute to communities through tourism, through advocacy, by connecting people with nature. And I, I think those are all valuable things, valuable services that zoos provide to communities, and I think it would be a shame for Sault Ste. Marie to miss out on those services.
So, so if I'm understanding correctly, it's the, the intangibles that it provides that you're suggesting is, is a reason we shouldn't get out?
I, I think quite honestly that there are tangibles. I think the, the economic value of zoos has also been well documented, and they do serve as a tourist attraction, and also as a, as a really effective way of educating and connecting particularly young people with nature. And I think that's an incredibly valuable thing in our society.
And CASA is a regulator, for lack of a sort of better word, but what, when is someone in CASA, and what prevents them from getting out of it?
Getting out of CASA means that you don't meet the standards that are set by our industry. CASA is, as I said, leading the way in setting standards for the welfare of captive animals in Canada, and that has been well recognized by several jurisdictions. And our process is, again, more and more transparent, and our consultative process involves a number of experts to ensure that we have the latest scientific input into the standards that we develop for the industry. As I said, over 165 zoos that we know of in Canada, only 31 meet the standard of CASA and know of accredited zoos and aquariums.
Okay, I, I get that, but if someone just didn't want to abide by CASA's regulations, you had mentioned there's, there's disciplinary provisions, but what jurisdiction, I guess, do you have over a zoo that just doesn't want to meet your...
CASA doesn't have jurisdiction. It's up to the, the local, the local governing authorities, such as, in this case, city council, the city of Sault Ste. Marie. But in other places like British Columbia and like New Brunswick, those are provincial laws that if you are operating a zoo within those provinces, you must be CASA accredited. If you are not CASA accredited, you're contributing the law.
Okay. And so, I guess, does, does CASA have recommendation or perhaps a suggestion on how we would go about ensuring compliance with CASA's regulations? Would that be a staff member on our end that would have to do that?
I think the consultation process with CASA and the city of Sault Ste. Marie would iron out those details. I, I feel that CASA accreditation standards, if they are enforced, would ensure that any zoos that operate within your city are meeting the highest, quite honestly, international standards of care and welfare for the animals that you have.
And does CASA have, or is it proposed that they would have staff based here in the zoo to, to help the city or to assist the city in making sure those regulations are met?
No, CASA staff would not be located here. The way the accreditation process works is that an accreditation inspection is, is scheduled with a prospective member or re-accreditation for, for a current member, and a team of inspectors would travel to inspect and provide that report to the organization.
So how often would that happen?
That happens when initial accreditation is sought, and then it can happen every three years or if needed, more frequently, based on, based on complaints. years, or if needed, more frequently based on complaints or based on concerns that are raised to CASA.
So I guess that's the link I'm looking to see what, you know, how we can play a role, or if we can play a role, I guess, is a better question. If a complaint comes in, presumably it would come to the city, or does CASA have a complaints line directly?
We take complaints actively through our national office in Ottawa, but certainly a complaint can be lodged to the city, and the city can communicate that to CASA.
And if that's done, does CASA then send someone up, you know, hypothetically, would CASA then send somebody up to Sault Ste. Marie?
Well, as Chair of the Ethics and Compliance Committee, I would be responsible for an investigation, and that is handled through our national office in Ottawa. And then with the, if the complaint is found to have merit, then it will be fully investigated by the Ethics and Compliance Committee.
What if something is of an urgent or pressing nature? How do you deal with that if you don't have people based here in Sault Ste. Marie?
We can mobilize fairly quickly. We have access to a network of zoo professionals, wildlife, health professionals, welfare professionals. So we have access to a large team, a network of people, and we could mobilize fairly quickly if there's a concern.
Okay, and does our local zoo meet CASA's current regulations? Do you know?
I don't believe so. They're not currently CASA accredited.
Okay, okay, those are my questions.
Councillor Hoopinen.
And thank you for the presentation. It was very interesting. It's good to hear both sides. For the consultation between CASA and the city staff, who pays for that?
That would be our national office that would engage in the consultation.
Okay, so there'd be no cost to the city, to the municipality, in other words?
I don't believe so, but again...
Okay, the reason I ask is that...
Our executive director could clarify.
Okay, good. I just said I have documentation that there was a zoo in Alberta that was charged $12,000 from CASA for doing an inspection, so I was just curious.
Well, the accreditation process is funded by the members. So when an accreditation inspection takes place, the cost of that inspection is borne by the members.
Okay, that's good. Also, thank you for mentioning my name in your introduction. I do have to clarify, though, that I did contact CASA in the very beginning, when I first started doing my research. Took a couple of days for them to get back to me, and they just confirmed that, no, Sprucehaven was not a CASA accredited. There was no sort of interaction, so in my defense, I really did reach out to you.
Okay, I apologize. My information is that I...
Yeah, no problem. No, I just wanted to clarify that because it's making me sound like the bad person. And by the way, I'm not anti-zoo. Zoo Check is not anti-zoo. We're for zoos, but I...
Questions? Questions?
Okay, thank you. There was one question. You have not visited Sprucehaven Zoo?
No, I have not.
Have you read a report written by Dr. Martin Oberg for Zoo Check about Sprucehaven Zoo that was done?
I'm not actually here to speak on a specific zoo.
Okay, fair enough. No, that's good. Okay, no, I understand that. Is there a requirement for a CASA accredited zoo to have safe fencing and a perimeter fence?
Yes, sir.
That is a requirement?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I'm happy to hear that. I'm all for regulations. Through my research, I've learned that CASA does not revoke accreditation from zoos that are non-compliant. The standard set out by CASA, which was reported in the Toronto Sun, uncovered that the Toronto Zoo had been selling off animals to disreputable animal dealers, and some animals ended up in hunt farms in Texas. So how would you handle that? That's from an accredited zoo, a CASA accredited zoo.
Yeah, I...
I'm just trying to make sure that everybody understands what CASA is and sort of both sides.
Yeah, as I've said, CASA accreditation standards are quite robust and represent really international standards and best practices. I believe what you're referring to happened before I was even at the zoo, more than 32 years ago, and I would agree that selling to hunt ranches or anything like that is certainly something that contravenes CASA standards today and would not be tolerated. So I'm not, I can't really comment on that case. It was well before my time at the zoo, more than 30 years ago.
Okay, that's fine. Have you read the bylaw, sir? Have you read the proposed bylaw?
I've been briefed on it, but I haven't read it.
You haven't read it? Okay, well, let me just...
No, no.
It does...
Let's stay...
It is a question. It is a question. It does indicate that there is a bylaw for dangerous dogs, but there's nothing in the bylaw for dangerous animals. Would that be something that CASA could remedy?
I think that's up to the city of Sault Ste. Marie to deal with.
Again, so it's up to, we should be looking at regulating, perhaps, working with CASA to regulate.
Yeah, and working with CASA to put in regulations, much like British Columbia has done and New Brunswick have done, where CASA accreditation standards become the regulations that industries or institutions need to meet in order to keep exotic wildlife in the provinces.
Right, and your standards are fairly high.
Yes.
Yeah, and how are you funded, sir?
We are funded through our members. It's a membership-driven organization, so all that funding comes from the members.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
All right, councillor Hollingsworth.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and for traveling up to our city. We hope you enjoy your visit while you're here.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions. Tell me again, CASA, how, when was it established? How long has it been in existence?
CASA was established in 1975.
1975?
Yes.
By whom?
It was a group of zoos and aquariums working in Canada at the time. Toronto Zoo was a founding member of CASA.
And the purpose is to, again, for...
The purpose is to ensure that the welfare of the animals and their care meets the highest international standards.
Okay. Couple more questions. I like how you're saying about education and the importance of educating individuals, families, whatnot, on animals and how to treat them. And I guess education kind of shadows to what they're taught in school. So my question around education is round, does CASA work with zoos where animals in the wild have been hurt, and there's a danger to animals to release them back in the wild because they may not survive?
Yes, many of our members do that. At Toronto Zoo, I can speak specifically to that. We are a licensed Ontario wildlife rehabilitator, and we do take animals that cannot be released. We have a, I work with reptiles and amphibians. One of the animals that we just accepted recently was a blending serato who had her front flippers chewed off by a raccoon. So cases like that, certainly, Toronto Zoo and many of CASA's members do step up and help rescue wildlife, injured wildlife.
Okay, going back to education, CASA, is it your mandate to go out to schools, to groups, to do some education?
Again, some of our member institutions have such programs. Toronto Zoo certainly does. We have a Great Lakes program, which actually puts Atlantic salmon eggs into classrooms, and the students raise these animals until they can be released to the wild. So those are the type of conservation education programs that we offer. But there are also a whole host of education opportunities, non-traditional opportunities, experiential opportunities for learning that we provide, not just to children, but to adults as well. And again, that's, you know, that's specific to the individual members who engage in those activities. I've lectured as part of a zoo conservation program at the University of Toronto, at Laurentian University. I've taught exotic animal health courses for veterinary technicians at Sheridan College in Brampton. So we engage in formal and informal education.
Okay, and just two more questions. In Northern Ontario, are there any zoos that have the CASA membership designation?
Well, Science North, Science North keeps animals, and they are CASA accredited. They're in Sudbury, so there are, certainly are.
Okay, and thank you again. The advantage of having a zoo and advantage of CASA is a good education opportunity. I support zoos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Councillor Butler.
Your presence this evening, is it as a result of our situation specifically, or in reading the bylaw that we're proposing? Because you mentioned B.C., New Brunswick. We're Sault Ste. Marie. We're not at the provincial level. What brings you here? And should we employ the services of CASA? We have to join and pay a membership, correct?
No, you would not. It would be any organization that sets up a business in Sault Ste. Marie as a zoo would potentially have to meet CASA accreditation standards if you so put that in your regulations. But the regulations are entirely up to the city of Sault Ste. Marie. We have worked with different jurisdictions. We have worked with municipalities. We have worked with provincial governments. We're currently working with Saskatchewan and Quebec as well, because right now in Ontario, there is a lack of regulation for exotic animals and for zoos. There are no provincial, there is no provincial legislation. There is no federal legislation regulating zoos. So the regulations are typically municipal, and if we can work with municipalities to provide the expertise through our standards, that they have a regulatory framework under which they can assess businesses that set up in their cities. So that would be our role. The city of Sault Ste. Marie would not be paying due to CASA, and the city would not be a member of CASA. It would just be any zoos that set up business in your city. If you so choose to do so, you could put our standards as part of your regulations, and that would take the regulatory and the enforcement burden off of the city and place it with the industry, with CASA.
Are we allowed comments, Mr. Rangell?
No.
No? I'd love to comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Well, councillor Fatah.
As far as, this will be the last time you'll be here, so whatever information that you're supplying us won't be available to us going forward, but my concern, of course, is with Sprucehaven. And is there something you can advise us now, today, while you're here, in helping us decide what will be the fate of Sprucehaven, or what should be the fate? He's here only tonight, so I just want, I want his input on this matter, because we're getting a tug of war, seems to be sort of a fact here, that I'm not very comfortable with. I want to know your, at least give us whatever you can give us. I know that you haven't gone to the site, you haven't seen it. I understand all that, but it just seems like we're rushing to judgment based on another organization.
Question? Okay, question? Go ahead.
I'm asking for his advice for us.
May I just clarify something? I am only here today to speak to you this one time. However, the CASA national office, and quite honestly, I myself, are available for consultation at any time. We can certainly take this offline and discuss it at length, anytime you wish in the future. Our executive director, as I said, reached out and is more than willing to discuss this with any of the council members, with any of the city staff. So you do have access to our input, and quite honestly, we're very, very willing and eager to provide that because we want to see the best outcome for those animals and for zoos in general. So we're quite open to discussing this further with you. Commenting specifically on Sprucehaven, I don't think that's appropriate for what we do, because we're not that familiar with the particular case. I think what I'm suggesting is that if you have an issue with a particular zoo, I suggest we deal with that and not eliminate all zoos altogether, because they do provide a valuable service to your community. And I would recommend that, moving forward, you potentially use CASA standards to guide, even existing institutions, on improving the situation so that they are acceptable and they are meeting the high standards of animal welfare that we set out.
Okay, councillor Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Sir, you said just a moment ago that if we worked your regulations into our bylaw, that you would perform the enforcement of those regulations? If someone was in contravention of that bylaw, who would prosecute? You or the city?
That would be up to the city, and quite honestly, if accreditation were mandatory for business to operate out of a zoo in Sault Ste. Marie, and a facility didn't have it, then they would be contributing, and they wouldn't be permitted to work in your city. That's the way I would interpret that. And further, if a member is operating in your city, and there is a complaint, and that complaint is investigated, and disciplinary action is taken, including suspension of membership or expulsion, which can happen, then they would obviously not be permitted to work in your city, to do business in your city if they've lost that accreditation. So the inspections would be on CASA, and those findings would be something that you would act on.
But history tells us that any contravention of bylaws usually are not that cut dry. Usually, there's court action, there's court cases, and it drags on for a while, and there's solicitor costs and all of that. So we could work your standards in, but no cost would be recouped by your organization, strictly city cost.
Again, if there's an investigation launched, CASA bears the cost of that investigation. If it requires supplemental, if there's an appeal, a leave to appeal is granted, then the cost of that would go to the member institution, but it wouldn't go to the city.
So to be clear, you would confirm that the so-called zoo is in contravention of the bylaw, but it would be up to the municipality to prosecute?
We would confirm that the zoo A, B, or C is not meeting CASA standards, and as discipline for that, they could be suspended or expelled from the organization and would lose accreditation. So once they've lost accreditation, if that's what's written into your bylaw, then they would be in contravention of your bylaw.
But they could appeal that, and you could still end up in court.
I imagine they could, just like any other bylaw, yes.
Yeah, right. That's where I was going with that.
Yeah, I imagine...
Okay, just, and secondly, sir, did you leave, do we have your email address?
I can certainly provide that to the clerk.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
You're good? One question.
There's just one question, thank you. We presently have the CASA accreditation requirement in our bylaw right now. So where does that stand, where does that put the situation right now, Ms. Kenny, if you don't mind, please?
The accreditation section?
Yes, we have that in our bylaw, the 2012, 2013.
It's accreditation through the province for certain wildlife, and it's, which allows you to, if you have a license from MNR, you're allowed to...
No, sorry, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, in our bylaw, it indicates that any zoo that's operated in the city of Sault Ste. Marie has to be accredited by CASA.
Yeah.
They are not accredited by CASA.
Okay, this question needs to be directed to our speaker. That's the purpose of this session, so... Any other questions?
There.
Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for your time, sir. Appreciate you coming to Sault Ste. Marie, and wish you a safe trip back.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to speaking with you further if still requested.
Thank you.
Mr. Acting Mayor, members of council, there's one other item on the regular portion, 7.8.1 Sault Ste. Marie Police Services Board. That is something that's related to a bylaw under the bylaw agenda. This is merely correspondence that goes with it. I just draw it to your attention now in case there's a question on correspondence. If not, we can move on to section eight.
Any questions? Seeing none?
Under section eight, 8.1, Crossing Guard, St. George's Avenue and McNabb Street, a motion by councillors Nero and Christian. Actually, let's wait until the mayor is back so that we can deal with this and you're back to your usual spot. Residential driveway snow removal is 8.2. A motion by councillors Myers and Hollingsworth. Whereas snow management is a challenging aspect of city operations, and whereas no two winters are exactly the same and varying approaches are dictated by weather determinants, and whereas this particular winter appears to require more snow cutting on the roadways, including residential streets, and whereas in so doing, large chunks of ice and snow are left in the entryways of many homeowners, and whereas under the usual snow removal task, homeowners are able to use a domestic snow blower or such, and whereas it appears on some occasions, included in the city operation of snow cutting on the roadway, the heavy material left in residential driveways is removed with a one-scoop city blade, which creates a manageable task for residential homeowners, and whereas there is a two-foot rule applicable for snowfall, normal plow operations, now therefore be it resolved that appropriate staff be requested... that appropriate staff be requested to report back to city council on February 20th, 2018, outlining the policy and procedure as to when the city will remove the heavier material and when it will not.
Okay, so we have Counselor Myers. Do you want to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, out of the gate, I think, the thing I want to certainly strongly acknowledge is our staff and the work that they do. And kudos to them for what they do. This is in no way a criticism of our snow management, and I want to make that very clear, because I've been sitting here, this is my 13th winter, and I've had a front row seat at the various winters, and I always say that no two are the same. I said it in the resolution, because no two are exactly the same. They each present their own challenges, and I think our staff do an outstanding job on managing. What this is about is that certainly within Ward II, I know that when we've had these incidents this winter, where we seem to have had to do extra cutting because of the variable weather conditions, it'll be heavy, heavy snow, and then we'll get melting and create some real havoc, and then we hit heavy snow again, and so on and so forth. And obviously, I think by now we all understand the cutting is essential when you're trying to deal with flood prevention of our storm drains and so on and so forth. So that, it's not a straightforward matter. But what's happening is that there seems to be some occasions when we do the, the follow-up with the, I call it the one-blade scoop, or the one-scoop blade effort following a snow cutting and that what's left behind in the driveway entries, and then sometimes we don't. I do understand and appreciate the two-foot rule, and my understanding of the two-foot rule is to do with snowfall accumulation. When we get into this material, this material could be six inches high, and it still becomes a real obstacle for people with what I call a domestic snow blower, who most of the time can manage their snow removal in their driveway. But when they get into this material, they can't use it. I hear them talking about they've, you know, broken their shear pins or this or that. We get all the different calls. And Public Works Call Center is definitely getting a thousand times more than what I'm getting as one Ward counselor. So I think we have an issue here that is growing because of our variable weather conditions and because we're trying to keep as many people in their home as possible. I spoke to the city of Brantford, and I included for council only as information, Mr. Girardi had this quite some time ago when it was first given to me, about what the city of Brantford does. They've been running their program for 10 years, their windrow program. And I'm talking about the snow windrow, because that would, if we had a program in place that dealt with snow windrows, it was also, it would also deal with this other issue about the heavier material that shows up from time to time. But Brantford's been running their program for 10 years, and it's outsourced through an RFP process via their purchasing department, and they have a population of over 100,000. They have an average of 1,000 users, they, each year. It started out with 900 and some, and right now they're at 1,030. So she said it pretty well averages 1,000 a year. And their budget's $29,000 for this. And each con, the contractor charges $5.91 a windrow. I'm going to be bringing a resolution at a later date back, asking staff to look at the option of some sort of a similar program for us to get some estimated costs that could be considered in the 2019 budget. But the other piece I want to bring in here is this, and I don't know what the proper terminology is, Mr. Girardi, you would know, but it's equipment that can go on the snowplow or on the loader. I've seen it in Sioux, Michigan with their plows, and, and all I can say in my complete ignorance of technology is that you're going along with the plow, you can lift this and put it back down again and so on, and it's, in some fashion or other, it's able to address these driveway entries. It's a capital cost. Obviously, it's equipment. Obviously, there's a price tag to it. But in my resolution, I'm going to be asking if staff can look at whatever this equipment is that we would need. And again, going forward, this is the kind of thing I talked about in that resolution back before Christmas, that as we look into our future spending, we may have to spend some money to better service people that in the end is going to give us a better service in the community, but also save us money. Because there are hundreds of calls the Public Works is dealing with, with this matter every winter. And then supervisors go out, and they go out and they measure windrows and so on and so on and so forth. So quite frankly, I think there's a better use for money. So that's going to be a different resolution, so I guess as a verbal notice of motion. But this one tonight, I'm going to ask that if Mr. Girardi wants to comment, now he can, but the report could come back in a couple of weeks' time, simply to explain how it is we arrive at what we're doing now, because it seems to be varied throughout the community.
Okay. So do we have any, do you want to speak to that now, Mr. Girardi? Because we have the secondary here who wants to add something, so I was going to go to her next.
I can, I can certainly speak to it if council wants, if they want me to come back with a report. We can do that.
Let's just go to Counselor Hollingsworth, and then we'll go to you, Mr. Girardi.
Okay, great. Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be, as the secondary, I just want to give a compliment to my Ward II mate, Counselor Myers. Very well done, and it shows that you care. And this, if I may comment, this was not, as Counselor Myers has said, this is not new. This has been going on last year again. I haven't been on council very long, but last year we had phone calls and people couldn't get out of the driveway, because they are very heavy, they're chunks of ice. And even like with the snow blower, it does break the snow blowers. I've come across more than five, six, 10 phone calls on this issue. So Counselor Myers, thank you.
Mr. Girardi, you want to speak to it?
Certainly. To you, Mr. Mayor, to the councilors and Counselor Myers for bringing this up. As a rule, removing the snowpack off the streets is done in such a manner to eliminate an excessive amount of snowpack. So we do it often, as you had mentioned. We attempt to keep the windrows below two feet. So in order, and to do it more often, we need to do that, to keep it below two feet. Again, this two-foot rule, the two-foot rule is a guide for our staff. That's so that we have some consistent communication going out to the people throughout the city. If we're plowing regular snow, the two-foot rule does not apply. The two-foot rule applies only when we're scraping. Now again, you have to look at, we have 30,000 driveways in Sault Ste. Marie, and in a night, a greater could, in scraping, could go past 2,000 to 3,000 driveways. So in reality, can we clean all those driveways? No, we couldn't. We don't have the equipment. The other thing you have to keep in mind too is, there's always good intentions where a supervisor or maintenance foreman will come out and say, listen, let's go ahead and let's clean some of these drivers, because it's excessive. And then a snow event begins, then they have to leave that and head off. So then you have the neighbors saying, well, you did mine, but you didn't do my neighbor's type of thing. Well, it's because something else has come up and we have to move. So in, we only have a limited amount of equipment, we only have a limited amount of staff to accomplish what we have to accomplish in a night. You had made mention of Brantford, and I remember that. Brantford has less than 80 events in a season. We have well, well more than 300 to 400 events. Our snow levels are considerably more. So it's kind of difficult to say that we would put a program in place that would match something like Brantford. I mean, it's a great idea that they've come up with. But I do recall council years back had come up with a program with Red Cross, and I know that's up in the air right now. So something similar to that would work, but to look at costs right now, if we started looking at the, doing driveways, we'd be over a million dollars. And we would, $29,000 wouldn't get us out of the yard. So that would be very, very difficult for us to be able to do, because you're talking to get 2,000 to 3,000 driveways in a night. So I just wanted you to have all that information, because if you're looking, going through this, I mean, we have to look at what we can accomplish as a team.
Thank you, Mr. Girardi. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Counselor Butland?
Yes. Spent an hour or so with Mr. Girardi today, and I have to admit, after 30 years, I'm still saying, what's the difference between grading and, and scraping? And I think I, I finally have it. And the two-foot rule was given to a supervisor some years ago, saying if there was some discrepancy or something that, now maybe this is more than it should be, it might be a corner lot and it's blocks of ice, the supervisor had the ability to say, okay, we're going to do that. It's difficult, because my experience over the years, a neighbor will say, well, how come he has it and I don't? And that's where consistency is of extreme importance. And just recently, for the first time ever, we had an issue in, maybe in the West End as well, but in East End, one street, or two streets, or three streets got the payloader come and take the snow from the end of the driveway, and the neighboring streets had, we didn't get anything. You're treating us differently. And the point being, the weather changed rather dramatically, and we had to leave what we were doing, or what they were doing, and relieve the catch basins to prevent flooding. So that was the reason for that, and consistency is most significant. And the Brantford regulations or whatever, that's at four inches, four inches of snow. Well, they'll be out four times a week at every driveway in the city. Mr. Girardi said there are 30,000 driveways. We need to be realistic. We are never, ever, ever going to be able to do that across the city. Impossible. No, we can do it, but it's going to be upwards of a million dollars. We have the best winter maintenance program in Ontario. I don't know if we still do, but there were years ago, our people were training people in other cities how to do snow removal. So they do a great job. And talking to some of the workers, for the first time ever, they say, hey, you know, on a personal side, you know, I'm burning out. This is tough sledding. And they say, I have a good job in the summer and I appreciate working for the city, but in the winter, it's tough sledding. So let's not create any great anticipation that we're going to do everybody's driveway. I'd say, leave well enough alone. We're doing a good job now. Let them decide. And if you have any doubts, call Mr. Girardi or Ms. Hamilton Beach and say, hey, what happened this week? Why this and why that? And they'll give you the answer. So as I say, you do a good job now, good job now, be well enough alone, and let's continue to deal with the winter as we do. And believe me, it's, we too get calls, say, my son has to go out on the roadway and, and direct me so that I can get out of my driveway. You need to remove the bank in front of my house. Well, the neighbor has the same thing, and there's three streets over. These individual situations, we can't be running out to individual locations across the city and removing snow from that place. So, well, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Bruni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I think this resolution that's in front of us, I think the concern is when the city staff scrape our streets. That's where the chunks of ice, that's where the damage is occurring to the snow blowers, and it is heavy. And especially if they come during the daytime, and the majority of the people are working days, by the time they come home sometimes, it's rock hard. Can't move it, can't get into your driveway. So I think that's basically my concern is, if we're scraping the streets, we need the side, well, this year I witnessed sidewalk blowers, cleaning everybody's driveway in certain areas, which is great, they're not using the payloaders, because they could be tied up somewhere else. But the sidewalk blowers worked, worked very, very well. So I think that's where the main concern is, is when you're scraping the streets, you got to have something behind them to clean out the driveways. And I know it's a cost, but, you know, it's a health issue for many people, seniors especially. So that's only my caution to Mr. Girardi, and they, PWT does an excellent job.
Okay. So we'll call a vote on that motion then? All in favor? Post? Carried.
Back to 8.1, a motion by councilors Nero and Christian. Whereas St. Basil Catholic Elementary School is located on St. George's Avenue, which is a highly traveled roadway, and whereas parents, students, and staff at St. Basil Catholic Elementary School are greatly concerned for the safety of their children who walk to and from school and must cross St. George's Avenue, and whereas the Parents Council of St. Basil Catholic Elementary School has collected 192 names on a petition requesting a crossing guard at the traffic control lights at St. George's Avenue and McNabb Street, now therefore be it resolved that council of the city of Sault Ste. Marie accept the petition from the Parents Council, and further that the request for a crossing guard be referred to Public Works and Engineering Services for a study and report back to council.
Okay, so Counselor Nero, do you need to add anything to this?
Well, I think it's pretty clear, Mr. Mayor.
I do too. All in favor? Carried.
Under Agenda Item 8.3, a motion by councilors Fatah and Bruni. Whereas Brewer Street West only exits onto Lyons Avenue, and whereas exiting onto Lyons Avenue can be dangerous with speed and a blind spot, road curves from traffic traveling easterly on Lyons Avenue, and whereas the option to exit onto Patrick Street would be much easier and safer for everyone, especially those residing in the neighborhood, now therefore be it resolved that staff be requested to report back to council, including possible removal of the no-exit signs on, for Patrick Street from Brewer Street West.
Counselor Fatah, do you have anything to add to that?
Pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward. All in favor? That motion's carried also.
Under Agenda Item 8.4, a motion by councilors Myers and Hollingsworth. Whereas the city's premier event venue, SR Centre, opened in the fall of 2006, and whereas the facility has been owned, operated, and managed by the city of Sault Ste. Marie from the beginning, and where, excuse me, whereas there is an option for the city to consider contracting with a private management company, and whereas city council has not had a report outlining the advantage and disadvantages of private management versus city management of the SR Centre, and whereas the last five years' average loss for the SR Centre is $435,585.76, and is budgeted to be $626,890.41 in 2018, and whereas the city of Kingston is contracted with a private management company for running the 10-year-old and 6,700-seat Rogers K-Rock Centre, and whereas Kingston City Council did enter into a new five-year contract last year whereby the city has guaranteed 100% of the first $550,000 of profit, and whereas Sault Ste. Marie City Council must have detailed information in order to ascertain any opportunity to seek private management of the SR Centre and stem the flow of loss, now therefore be it resolved that staff be requested to report back to council by August 2018, providing the following: examples of other similar-sized municipalities with similar facility being operated privately, and two, what process and timeline would be required for city council to consider the option of private management of the SR Centre?
Counselor Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to contextualize my request for this report, and first is around the issue of how many dark days or non-use days there are in any given year at our premier event centre. Notwithstanding the OHL schedule, I've thought that perhaps we do not have all the resources to aggressively market the venue to the fullest extent possible and maximize its use. I've asked myself, should we be looking at other options for doing so? Is it a case of hiring more staff to hit the road and promote outside the zoo? Is it a case of looking at private management? Secondly, I've attended five Greyhound games since December, which I don't usually do, and like all Siouxites, I've been so pleased to see our OHL team doing well. I thought to myself again, and commented to someone, that I recall being told in years past, when the team gets into the playoffs, it can have a significant financial positive impact on the SR Centre operations. I understand they've now secured a spot in the playoffs, so that's good news, but it made me wonder if it would be enough to see us break even? How naive that thought turned out to be. Third, I hearken back to listening to the recent report to council around ice utilization, and as I stated at that last meeting, I'm soundly of the mind that we must find a way to replace the McMecon Centre, so hold that thought. The tipping point after all of these thoughts was when a Ward II resident gave me the news article attached to this agenda item. It reports on the status of Kingston's municipally-owned arena, the K-Rock Centre. It is privately managed, and as the article says, brings about a half a million dollars in revenue to the city budget. It's not a loser, but a revenue generator. Wouldn't it be great if one day we could make a profit at SR Centre and help fund expanding facilities like, say, a new McMecon? With all this in mind, I contacted our CFO, Shelley Schell, to ask her to send me the last five years of financials for the SR Centre. I did not feel I could recall exactly how much we were losing these days, thinking it was in the range of about $300,000, and hoping that the playoff games, if long enough series, could even get that down lower. I spoke with her about the current financial status of our SR Centre, recalling that I knew it was not a profit maker. She sent me the numbers that we have in your package that we have attached to our agenda. I knew we would not make, we, I knew we did not make money and in fact did lose, and while this has been an accepted... this has been an accepted understanding, as was the case with our Memorial Gardens before. Seeing the year-over-year report and how the numbers have increased each year was truly alarming. All of these thoughts are what has precipitated my strong belief that this cannot continue. We must look at options to arrest this growing cost. I will add that in late two thousand and thirteen, early two thousand and fourteen, there was a report that came to the previous council in caucus only around evaluating whether or not to retain a third-party manager. This was at a point when we were looking at a change in how we were doing our marketing and promotion of events. Um, or, or a third-party manager could be looking at any aspect of the operating, marketing, programming, or such at the SR Center. The report was done by Price Waterhouse Cooper and was quite informative. It's time now to bring that research forward to this council, updated with the information, and report back not only to city council, but the community at large. Identified in the report were a number of mining down further aspects, which in essence is what I'm looking to see. I realize there's a myriad of factors, and many are outlined in the two thousand and fourteen report. We simply cannot say what happens in Kingston or elsewhere would be our experience. However, we need to look at the options. As noted in the resolution, the SR Center has a five-year average loss from two thousand and twelve to sixteen of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-five annually. Two thousand and seventeen, it was five hundred and eighty-nine, and is budgeted for a loss of two thousand and eighteen, in two thousand and eighteen of six hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. We can look at increasing centers such as building more suites, and we have a report coming back on that, which is good, but in my view, we have a hemorrhaging that must be addressed and all options have to be on the table. Mr. Mayor and members of council, if we can find a way to arrest the continued growing loss of upwards from six hundred thousand, and one day also find a means to actually earn revenues of upwards from four hundred thousand, there's a potential million-dollar shift in years to come. I recognize that we need to get more information in order to make a decision about this. I've given five months for this report to come back for a reason, because we've really got to mine down. The PWC report that was done, uh, and, and given, um, to us in caucus in, in January, I think it was June two thousand and fourteen, this council hasn't seen it at all. And, um, it didn't mine down at all to the financials. I've had good discussions with our CFO. Um, the finance department wasn't involved at all in that report. It was maybe a process and a path type report, but it certainly didn't get us down to a place where we would need to be in order to make a decision on this matter. So, Mr. Mayor and council, I ask for your support on this resolution.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Shoemaker then councillor Butland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was doing a bit of reading earlier today. From February twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen, the headline was "Council Nix's Staff Report on Arena Leasing." The first line of the article is, "A divided city council resulted in a failed bid to get staff to pen a report about the pros and cons of leasing the McMecon Center to a private operator." Councillor Myers at the time said, quote, "I am philosophically opposed to a private operator making money off a taxpayer facility," end quote. So, I'm not sure what's changed since February two thousand and seventeen, which was twelve months ago. Um, but I've asked for this type of report. It was voted down. And I think that if we're going to look at it now, uh, there are two things we need to do to this resolution. One is add the McMecon Center and the John Rhodes in it. And two is make a comeback after August two thousand and eighteen, because I think the timeline opens up those who have moved it and seconded it to the criticism that this is blatant electioneering. So I would ask that it come back after the election, and I would ask that it also include the McMecon Center and the John Rhodes Center. Uh, and I'm moving that motion to amend.
Okay, so councillor Myers, is there a secondaire for that motion to amend? Councillor Hoopinen, second that? Okay, so we have that motion to amend. The motion to amend is twofold. As I understand it, is to amend the motion to include all of our ranked facilities? Okay. So you'd be asking if we'll report back to get private operators for each of our ranked facilities? And you'd also be asking that this come back in October? At which point, just to be clear, we wouldn't be making this decision. You're looking to get information for the, I suppose, the next mayor and council. Okay, so that's the amended motion in front of us. So we're going to deal with that first. Councillor Hoopinen, so it's councillor Hollingsworth? On the amended motion?
Correct. Just, um, on procedures, would that be a friendly? Couldn't you come back to the?
That's not friendly.
No.
It's too substantively, if it was friendly, I would have asked. That was probably an unfriendly amendment. But it's too substantively different. So, okay.
Procedurely, that was my question. That's a not the same motion, Mr. Mayor. Procedurely, that's a different motion altogether.
No, it's, it is, it is an amendment of, of.
No, it isn't, Mr. Mayor. I'm asking specifically around one venue for a reason.
So I, he.
It's the premier venue. It's an event and entertainment center. It's not an arena.
I, I appreciate that, councillor Myers.
Well, it's a separate resolution.
I, I don't think it is.
Okay.
So we have, we have a secondaire for it. We're going to deal with that first. So on the amendment, any more comments or questions on the amendment? Councillor Butland?
Yes. Anything dealing with McMecon Center would kill any hope of leasing anything out. No one would ever consider leasing, leasing the McMecon Center. So if you wanted to consider.
I made a decision on it, councillor Hollingsworth. It's not a separate motion. It's an amendment to the main motion, I've decided. So we're going to have a vote on the amendment. It's a recorded vote. Councillor, sorry, yeah. Mr. Clerk?
Recorded vote has been requested. Councillor Turco?
Against.
Councillor Fatta?
For.
Councillor Christian?
Against.
Councillor Kompadich?
Against.
Councillor Hoopinen?
For.
Councillor Hollingsworth?
Against.
Councillor Grandinetti?
For.
Councillor Shoemaker?
For.
Councillor Nero?
Against.
Councillor Brunie?
For.
Councillor Myers?
Against.
Councillor Butland?
Against.
Mayor Provenzano?
Against.
So the amendment fails. So now we're back to the main motion. So we're on the main motion. So I'll take councillor Christian.
Um, I understand where councillor Shoemaker's going with this. We're trying to deal with, we're trying to deal with the, uh, for lack of a better word, our lost leaders, the, the types of things that we have to offer as a community to make the community a better place. So I understand that, but I do agree that there is an issue specifically with the SR Center. And I understand the spirit of the motion, because we're talking about marketing and try to better utilize a facility that was designed. And I remember at the time, when I was sitting on the, the sidelines, when the SR Center was pitched as, uh, you know, the great venue for Sault Ste. Marie, when in fact, we've got probably fifty days a year that it's used, and it sits idly, uh, the rest of the time. So I appreciate both sides, but I do think that perhaps, uh, that councillor Shoemaker's resolution may be reconsidered at some point for sure, but I do think it is separate. The only concern I have with this motion is that, um, I mean, I know we have to, to, turn every stone. I, I get that. I understand the philosophy behind that. But we can't over, we, we can't be overly optimistic, simply because we do have a limited market, we have an aging population, we have, uh, many people on, um, fixed incomes. And I'm not trying to paint a negative picture. I mean, that, that's the economic reality. Uh, so, you know, I, I wonder if a third party would like to come forward and, and attempt to, uh, try to make it profitable, or how much work actually has to go in to, uh, close that six hundred thousand dollar gap? Maybe, maybe what we could do is stem the flow a little bit. We can slow down the bleeding. I don't, I don't know that we'll, we'll ever make that amount up. So I just, I caution that we need to do this. I get that, but, uh, we're a small market. There, you know, a lot of these arenas don't make money. We're a small market. You can, you can hire marketing people and you could throw stuff out there, but there's only so many dollars to spend in a year. You can have the activity on the front side, which doesn't mean you're going to fill the seats. So let's, let's look into this, but, uh, let's not set the bar too high. Let's look at some opportunity. Maybe one of the things we need to do, dare, dare I say, is look at the contracts that we have for our, our current tenants and see if we can strike a, a more equitable deal, but that's perhaps a story for another day.
Councillor Brunie?
Can we ask, uh, questions or?
Sure. Go ahead.
Regarding the, I guess to Mr. Ver, regarding the salary, salaries, uh, has increased by almost a hundred, well, just under a hundred thousand. What's the reasoning for that? And am I going to hear the minimum wage? To Mr. Ver.
Through you, uh, Mr. Mayor to councillor Brunie. Um, sorry, which line were you looking at there?
Um, salaries and benefits. There's an increase for two thousand and eighteen to eight hundred and nine, uh, thirty-five, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand. And the budget for seven, uh, two thousand and seventeen was seven hundred and fifty-three. So why the big jump? Are you going to say it's because of the minimum wage?
Uh, the what? Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Brunie, there was an impact of minimum wage in the numbers, uh, but that wasn't making up the, uh, it was a small amount of increase there. Um, I'm just trying to pull up the, the detailed numbers, because in fact, this year, we've taken steps to reduce the staffing count, so that will have dividends in future years for the operations of the SR Center. The facility administration fee that you, or charge that you see there includes staff across, uh, the SR Center. Uh, but those roles also contribute to some of the operations in other centers as well. Talking about facility coordinators, the maintenance of the facility, uh, food and beverage, it also looks like concession stands in some of the other, um, locations in the city, um, and supervisors that go along with that.
So this budget summary is, it says here, for SR Center. So this wouldn't be for the John Rhodes or for, uh, the Pavilion? This is just strictly for the SR Center? Am I correct?
Correct. For the SR Center. Um, sorry, the, the, the positions I was recounting for you there, as I'm looking for the other information, just is within the facility administration, not a line item that you were provided.
Yes. I think, I think you're talking.
Yeah.
A different report.
So what are you, what are you trying to get at though, councillor Brunie? So you have, like, this was a budget that was passed, you know, at the end of the year. So you.
I'm just asking a question, Mr. Mayor.
Senator Sal.
I'm not getting an answer.
We're not, we're not, we're not going through the, the budgeting process here again, though. It's a question of whether we're going to outsource the operation of the SR Center to a private function, or if we're going to continue doing it in-house.
I'm just trying to figure out why the costs are going up, that's all. It's in the, it's in the report here. It's a legitimate question, no? If they provided a financial report here, why can't I ask a question on it?
Well, you can, but.
Well, that's why I am. I'm trying.
Yep. Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Brunie, I'm, I'm trying to pull that up. The numbers that you have in front of you are two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen, uh, year-to-date, and I don't have, I can't pull that up here in front of me. I'm not sure if the CFO has that. That was before I started with the city, so. Seventeen, eighteen. He's looking at which figure? Oh, you're looking at that one. Okay, sorry. Sorry. Yep. Oh, okay, yeah, sixty.
So, Mr. Ver, if you're not in position to answer the question tonight, can you let us know that, so we could move on?
Yeah, I can't pull that up for you right now.
Okay. So, Mr. Ver isn't in position to answer that question tonight? He can get the, he'll get the information to you, councillor Brunie, within the next twenty-four hours. Are you done, councillor Brunie?
That's it, yes.
Councillor Butland?
Very briefly. Uh, a favor of taking a look at this. Councillor Christian, I think, covered, don't get our expectations too high, but it's, it's worth a take, uh, taking a look. Never a big fan of privatization, but, uh, circumstance leads us to say, we probably need to do this. At least put it out there and say, hey, come on forward and tell us what you are prepared, what, what contract are you prepared to deal with? The caution, of course, is, what attractions, more attractions will the private industry bring in? And remember, they are there for a profit. And what about the user groups that use the SR Center? And in order to realize a profit, what if the local service groups have to increase the user fees? That would be counterproductive. But it's worth the exercise. Let's take a look and let's see what comes forward.
Councillor Kompadich?
Yeah, just a question to Mr. Ver. If we were looking at outsourcing and, me, I'm, I'm against privatization myself, but if we were, how many local jobs would be impacted by, uh, such an event like this? Any idea?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Kompadich. I, um, it would depend on the type of outsourcing arrangement you had, and it would depend on which positions that private sector firm was managing there. Um, certainly there's management staff within the SR team and box office staff that are there. Uh, and whether that was conducted entirely by a private sector company, um, would be subject to whatever negotiation happened with that private sector company, as well as the staffing within the facility. Certainly they would need staff to operate it. But there would be an impact to, I would imagine, certain positions within the SR Center.
And just one more question. Uh, Mr. Ver, okay, to keep these your jobs internal rather than outsourcing them, what would you suggest that we do to be able to, uh, increase the ability with our marketing and that of the SR Center?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Kompadich. Uh, certainly we are looking at, we've made some steps already as we look at streamlining the team within the SR Center. And then staff as well are looking at, um, unique ways to, uh, bring more events to the center. If you'll recall, we started an event development fund, uh, that we're starting to populate with funds through the surcharges to tickets, which will give us an ability to attract more events, uh, to the community and to the center. Um, a lot of, um, event, uh, event folks that approach the SR Center now are looking for co-promotion of events, which basically means the city and the event, um, promoter would participate in the, uh, the risk of the event or the initial costs of the event, and then share in the profits going forward. So we're looking at those unique models in order to bring more concerts and more events to, uh, the SR Center. So that works ongoing, and staff is looking at ways that we can increase the number of events and the types of events we have in the SR Center. I should mention from the ice utilization study, uh, that was put forward, certainly from an ice, uh, standpoint, as you heard from, uh, from our consultant, the primetime ice is fully booked at the SR Center from ice in to ice out. So the facility is well utilized for ice. Uh, and we're starting to see more uptake for non-primetime ice, uh, as mentioned through some of the other activities we have going on in Sault Ste. Marie with the hockey academies with some of the school boards.
And, Mr. Ver, with these new models we're looking at and these new opportunities, how soon do you think we will be expected to show a profit with the SR Center?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Kompadich, um, I'll echo a bit of councillor Christian's comments there. Showing a profit for one of these municipal arenas is, uh, a, um, a difficult task to do. Uh, what we are trying to do, though, is to stem the tide and continually improve the outcome of the operation of the center, uh, and the financial results of the center through looking at the events we've got there, looking at the fees that we're charging for food and beverage, looking at the opportunity for ticket surcharges, et cetera, um, to close the gap, uh, that we've got right now in terms of the financial performance of the center.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hoopinen?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would, uh, uh, Mr. Ver, this is for you. Would, uh, an animal-free circus be on the agenda at all for the, um, for the SR Center? A circus play or similar? Could it be?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Hoopinen, absolutely. And, and we have, uh, hosted similar events to that in the past, and we look for those types of things.
And, and how did they go? Pretty well?
Uh, they were well-attended, yes.
Excellent, good. I have some great suggestions, if you need any.
Okay. So, council, I'll just offer my two cents in this, and then we can go to a couple more questions, and then hopefully call vote. I, I have no opposition to the idea of this. I, I just think, I don't think the timing is, is entirely right from my perspective. We wouldn't get this report back until late year, where we wouldn't really be in an We wouldn't get this report back until late year, where we wouldn't really be in a position to make a decision on it. It would be really the next group of mayor and councilors that would make a decision. My, my feeling isn't, what's going to govern my vote is I think the current team who's looking at these things and trying to, to draw that number down and trying to decrease the loss in the building and trying to create new activity, I frankly think it's unlikely we'll have a private sector operator that, that would want to come in and take this facility. And instead of having our, our community service team focused on this, I, I would hope they would spend the year focused on turning that 600 into 500, maybe plan to turn that 600 into 400, so we can go in the right direction, and, and I would prefer to see them focus on that work this year. If at the end of this year, with some of their renewed efforts, they don't close that gap, then I would, I would be fully supportive of this motion in 2019 and look at that on a going-forward basis. It's just not a project I would see giving them at this time, because I know they're sensitive to that number, and they're trying to, to do some of their own work to draw that number down. So, in, in spirit and idea, I don't have any issue with the, the motion. I just think it's something that we should give a little more time to from my perspective. So go to Counselor Myers and Counselor Hollingsworth, and we'll call the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't disagree with anything you've said. What I wanted to try to do is make it, give it enough time, and we, we aren't lame duck until October. And we have the month of September, and that was purposely why I mentioned August. I'd like to think that five months would be enough time, because you don't have, I mean, unless you've had a chance to look at it, you haven't seen the report that we did receive in 2014. It's, it's got a real good groundwork to it, and actually, I said that to the C E O earlier today. It really gives staff a jumpstart on getting this. It needs to be mined down a little bit further with the financial piece, and, which is what CFO and I discussed. So I don't think, to be very honest, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, that it will take five months for them to come back and, and to satisfy this resolution. I did say in my comments, I didn't want it to be lost, that is it a case of hiring more staff to get out and hit the road and be aggressive in our promotion? I'm not looking at only private as an option here. The bottom line is addressing the hemorrhaging absolutely, and I do believe that staff are trying to work on that. Mr. Vare has inherited this. He, he did not create this. He's inherited it, and I know he's got all kinds of good ideas, and my question I wanted to ask him was whether or not he felt, I'll be very honest, I mean, I, you know, I know you guys were a little occupied on Friday, so I didn't talk to him on Friday about it, but, Mr. Vare, do you see any value, you've had a chance to see the report that, that exists. Do you, do you see any value in being able to just take that and update it a wee bit? It's four years ago now when that report was done, January of 14. All that's changed in that is that we've lost 270,000 more dollars from then till now, but I know you're working on it. But do you see some value in actually brushing that off or not? I mean, I'm happy to pull this resolution back if people feel this is a waste of time. Through you, Mr. Mayor to Mr. Vare.
Mr. Vare, are you, do you feel comfortable answering that question at this point?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Myers. I would say a couple of things. One is, you know, since the, looking at the initial resolution and doing some initial work, some of the numbers from other communities that are reported in there, when they look at revenues, they would include things like the naming rights for the facilities.
Yeah.
150,000 in revenue. So it might not be all that people think it is in terms of a private sector operator being able to come in and all of a sudden increase the revenues dramatically, because they're including some things that, you know, aren't tallied into our numbers there.
Right.
With that said, we have an existing report that's out there from a consultant that was done in 2014 that looked at some of the other facilities. We've looked at what Kingston has done recently when they came back to their council and the report they put forward there. So that information is available, and we could use that base of information to provide a report to council on that.
Yeah. I think the, the issue is the council and the public have not seen that Price Waterhouse report, and there's a lot of really good information there. It just needs to be mined down a little bit more with the financial piece. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I do hope that you would find yourself able to support this, because it, it is five months, and there's lots of time, in my view, for that. That's why I did it, because there's two months left of council, August and September, before we're lame duck. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor to Mr. Vare. Depending on which way the vote goes this evening, but if the vote is not passed, is there parts of SR or our gardens that could be privatized? For example, the canteens? And I know that John Rhodes, we've had past restaurant, but could there be parts of the SR that could be privatized, like, such as the canteens?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Hollingsworth. Certainly, those options exist. I would say practically, though, in terms of the performance of our food and beverage, it's an area that is growing and provides good revenue for the center, so I don't know that that's something we would want to or look at privatizing. All options are always available to us, but I don't see where that would be netting the facility any additional revenue, significant revenue.
Okay. Just a couple more questions. I know that obviously around our city, there's many institutions, large institutions, that have food services that have gone into privatizing, mentioning the hospital, for example. And it seems like maybe our labor seems to be the main cost and labor associated with our canteens, so that's the only reason I brought it up. Two more questions. Reading other cases of other arenas around Canada, I mean, even in the United States, have you considered a number arenas do offer indoor activities for the young, and where they charge parents maybe $5 or $10, for example? There is a program that has indoor gym, and it can be easily removed when it's time to have the hockey, and it can easily be set up at a very minimal cost, and it's geared towards young people from one to preschool five. And during the day, the parents come on the cold days, their kids get to play, and kids are exercising quality of health, quality of life. Has this been considered?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Hollingsworth. I can't say for certain that that particular idea has been examined. We, I can ask the staff if they've looked into something like that. With that said, you know, during the, during the, I guess you're talking about during the week, when younger toddlers are not, or don't go to school, would be the market for that service?
Right. Exactly. Which is what you're talking about, the premium versus non-premium ice time. And if, maybe off-record or some other time, we can go through the list, but this particular institute that I'm talking about, another arena, they have other ideas, like pop-up, pop-up stores, pop-up antique markets, pop-up arts and designs. I'm just trying to do what Paul Christian was saying, shrink the hemorrhage, and there's five other ideas that other arenas have used that help to reduce costs overall.
I think, Counselor Hollingsworth, maybe you could set up a, you know, an appointment with Mr. Vare and go through those things kind of independently. On the motion, all in favor of the motion?
Recorded vote.
Sure.
Recorded vote has been requested. Counselor Butler?
Four.
Counselor Myers?
Four.
Counselor Bruny?
Four.
Counselor Nero?
Four.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Four.
Counselor Grandinetti?
Four.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Four.
Counselor Hoopinen?
Four.
Counselor Campadix?
Against.
Counselor Christian?
Four.
Counselor Fata?
Four.
Counselor Turco?
Four.
Mayor Provenzano?
Four.
Motion passes.
Don't say I don't change my mind, Counselor Myers.
Under Agenda Item 8.5, a motion by Councilors Nero and Turco, whereas the Shadows of the Mind Film Festival runs from Monday, February 26th to Sunday, March 4th, 2018. And whereas the Shadows of the Mind Film Festival is a film festival that showcases films and other art forms for two purposes, to entertain and to educate. By attracting audiences through the entertainment value of film, the Film Festival uses select film and events to increase awareness and education on mental health and addiction issues, as well as other prevalent social topics as decided each year. And whereas the Shadows of the Mind Film Festival is a not-for-profit organization, and whereas the primary venue for the Film Festival is the Grand Theater, and whereas on some days during the week, the Film Festival will have films and panel discussions all day long, and whereas many patrons of the Film Festival attend in the morning and stay for the entire day, having lunch and dinner in the downtown area, including 3,195 filmgoers in 2017, now therefore be it resolved that the two-hour daily parking limit be waived at the Brock and Albert Parking Lot to permit full free parking from Monday, February 26th, 2018, to Friday, March 4th, 2018, all during the week of the Shadows of the Mind Film Festival.
Do you want to speak to this? Counselor Nero?
Very briefly, just that the Film Festival is very appreciative of council's approval to this. I think this is three or four years in a row now, and there's a lot of people who attend those, the festival and attend the venue right from morning till evening, so I think it helps them out for that, for that week. Thanks.
All in favor? Carried.
For 8.6, I've added the motion on closed captioning, a motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Butler. Resolve that appropriate staff review how to finalize, implement, and fund closed captioning of city council meeting broadcasts and webcasts for the balance of 2018, with funding for subsequent years to be referred to the 2019 budget process and report back to council as soon as possible.
All in favor? Carried.
Counsel, we have one bylaw that we need to separate due to a conflict. That's 2018-22, a motion by Councilors Myers and Fata. Resolve that bylaw 2018-22 be a bylaw to enforce the bylaws in various private properties and to amend Schedule A of bylaw 9305 be passed in open council this fifth day of February 2018.
All in favor?
Just for council's awareness, because of the postponement of the animal control bylaw, it's also separated out, so the overarching motion for bylaws, a motion by Councilors Myers and Fata, resolve that all bylaws under Item 11 of the agenda under date 2018-0205 be approved, save and accept bylaw 2018-19 and 2018-22.
All in favor? Carried.
For closed session, counsel, if you hadn't noticed, there is an addendum item on the closed session as well, so that item has been added into the authorizing resolution. A motion by Councilors Myers and Fata, resolve that this council proceed into closed session to discuss a property disposition, property acquisitions, an issue under the Companies' Creditors' Arrangement Act, an issue regarding a trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial, or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality, which if disclosed could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of another, and lastly, elaborate labor relations matter. Further be it resolved that should said closed session be adjourned, that council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same matters without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? Carried.
And a motion by Councilors Hollingsworth and Bruny, resolve that this council shall now adjourn.
All in favor? Carried.